The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, January 9, 2019 is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. And Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
And Vice Chair Hudes?
Here. And welcome to Commissioner Tavanna. We are happy to have you with us and have our commission getting back to full strength. So, welcome to 2019. Should be an interesting year. I would ask that everyone stand and join Commissioner Janoff in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the Planning Commission conducts this meeting this evening, on behalf of the Town Council and residents of Los Gatos, we encourage active participation, which is essential for democracy and critical to the work of the Planning Commission. Participation can occur through, number one, written comments, and we appreciate getting those in advance, and they're always welcome and very helpful to us. Secondly, during our meeting, we have two opportunities for the public to participate. Number one, we have the verbal communications period, where any individual may speak on a topic not on the agenda. And then, of course, during the specific hearing item, any member of the public may speak about that item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during either of those opportunities, please complete a speaker card and turn it into staff. And please print your name clearly, so I can try to make it out. When you speak, I ask that you come up to the podium and adjust the microphone, so that you're speaking directly into it. Please state your name and address for the record. In fairness to all who want to speak at this meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. So, we now have the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. And, of course, there's a three-minute limit. Do we have any cards for speakers not on the agenda? Okay. So, we now move on to the consent calendar. We have one consent calendar item to be acted on in a motion. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or the commission may request that any item be removed from the calendar. At the chair's discretion, items removed may be considered either before or after the public hearings portion of the agenda. So, we have one item, which is approval of the minutes from December 12, 2018. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar? Commissioner Birch?
I move for the approval of the meeting minutes for December 12, 2018.
Great. Do we have a second? Commissioner Badami?
Second.
Great. In favor? Opposed? Okay. Passes? You abstain? Okay. So, that would pass five to zero with one abstention. Okay. We now move to the public hearing portion of our agenda and consider Agenda Item Number Two, which is 248 Jared Lane, Architecture and Site Application S-16-054, requesting approval for construction of a new single-family residence and removal of large protected trees on a vacant property, Zone HR1, APN 53234071. Property owner: applicant Sam Pan. Project Planner: Sean Mullen. Continued from April 11, May 23, June 27, September 26, November 14, and December 12, 2018. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the property under consideration? Okay. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? None? Okay. Mr. Mullen, I understand you'll be giving the staff report this evening.
Thank you, Chair Hudes. Before you tonight is a continued request to construct a new single-family residence on vacant property in the Hillside area at 248 Jared Lane. The Planning Commission last considered this application on September 26, 2018, and continued the item to allow the applicant to address comments related to architecture, amassing, excavation, LRDA, trees, and retaining walls. The applicant completed the revisions in response to the comments received from the Planning Commission and presents a revised project tonight. Regarding architectural consideration, the applicant presents a revised design for the residence, which is similar in style to the previous. It includes modified amassing and an integrated front staircase at the front entry. And the main portion of the residence conforms to the LRDA, and the garage has been slid out from underneath the residence in response to direction received from the Planning Commission. The revised design was reviewed by the town's architectural consultant, who provided further recommendations to further improve the design. And the applicant incorporated all of these recommendations into the design before you tonight. The applicant has clarified the proposed tree removal and has also specified that the retaining walls would be concrete, poured and placed, and clad with natural-looking cultured stone. And the landscape plans continue to include screening plantings for the retaining walls. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider the proposal, and if finding merit with the project, approve the application subject to the recommended conditions included in Exhibit Four. And this concludes staff's presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Hansen?
I didn't see it in the staff report, so I think the answer is no. But did the applicant submit any data relative to the amount of excavation that was going to be related to the driveway versus the house itself for the below grade?
Between the previous design and the revised design?
Yes.
Yes, they did submit that data. The driveway has not changed. So, there's no change there. There's some changes and reductions in the volume of dirt that would be excavated within the house footprint from the original design being 2,891 cubic yards and the revised design being 2,301 cubic yards of cut. That is a 590 cubic yard reduction within the house footprint.
Okay. So, we know what the difference was from the changes they made, and there is no change in the driveway. We don't know what the breakdown of the total amount of cubic yards is between the driveway and the house.
We do know those numbers, yes. I'm sorry, I must have not understood. The site work, as we call it, has changed very slightly. That just has to do with some of the drainage and moving the driveway a little bit at the very top to approach the garage that's been slid out. So, it's going from a cut quantity of 405 cubic yards, which was presented at the last hearing, to 385 cubic yards.
And that's out of about 1,500 with the revised proposal. So, about a third?
For the site work, for the grading?
For the...I was...I'm looking at the total amount of dirt. I'm probably not making my question clear. I was trying to understand the total amount of excavation that would happen between the driveway and the house. How much was each?
The original between the driveway and the house was just over 3,600 cubic yards from my numbers. And then... 3,100 cubic yards. But Kevin Bagley from the town's engineering division may be able to shed some greater detail on that.
Okay. I was asking the question because that is one of the major provisions of the Hillside Design Guidelines, for which they are requesting an exception. And the number is quite a bit larger than the amount that's allowed in the guidelines.
Thank you.
Commissioner Janoff?
Just, excuse me, following along on the same line of question. I noticed that a large portion of the cubic yards of dirt difference has to do with eliminating a crawl space underneath the house that didn't really serve any purpose in the first design. So, it's sort of a kind of a throwaway, I guess. However, the garage is still residing predominantly underneath the house. Do you have any numbers regarding the amount of dirt being excavated solely for the garage?
I don't have that breakdown. I know that the applicant's civil engineer is on hand tonight and may be able to provide some numbers on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch, did you have a question? I know you were sort of raising your hand before.
I thought staff was about to weigh in on Commissioner Hansen's question. I was curious to hear the answer myself.
Sure. Kevin Bagley, Engineering Division. I just wanted to say, within the staff report, we have the total cut and fill volumes. Is that the number that you're both are looking for? Now, site-wide, there was, with this proposal, 2,718 cubic yards of cut and 1,185 cubic yards of fill.
Can I just ask you to repeat the second, the fill, again?
Sure. 1,185 cubic yards of fill. And then, just a mention as far as the amount of grading was in excess of what was allowed within the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. There is no maximum amount of grading. As far as grading volume, there is maximums for depths. So, they do exceed...there is an exception for the amount of depth of the cut and fill. But there is no maximum for the total volume of cut and fill within the standards and guidelines for the Hillside.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just look for clarification from Commissioner Hansen. Were you specifically looking for house versus driveway?
Yes, I was.
So, we will pull those numbers together and have those ready once you come back to staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I had a question. Question of staff is...this is in regards to the LRDA and in the justification letter from the applicant. And so, I wanted to understand, is...in the Hillside Design Guidelines, is it only that the main building is in the LRDA? What about garages or other, either parts of the building or separate buildings? What's...how do they have to fall within the LRDA?
I believe that the Hillside Guidelines say structures need to fall within the LRDA.
So, that is an exception, then?
The garage would be an exception.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, now we will open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. And so, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please. And we won't start the clock until this is ready, so... And that 10 minutes is for the total group of applicants. And I do think I have several cards. So, if you'd like to share your time, that's fine, or one person can speak.
Okay. First of all, Happy New Year. And my name's Sam. The address is 248 Jared Lane. Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank every commission members to give us opportunity to improve the previous plan. Based on your recommendation, we made a change and achieved desired result. I really appreciate your time and continued support. I also want to thank town of the planning department's staff and my team for their hard work. Okay. Here is a summary of the concern from the last meeting. And we are going to go through one by one from the LRA to the last item, its retaining wall. Okay. First of all, let's talking about LIDA. According to the commission members' requirement, and then now, we tried to push the house completely into the LRDA. That's the first change. It's a major change. And also, follow the planning commission's recommendation from the last meeting, the garage now is a pullout from the LRDA line to reduce excavation. And also, I believe it's helps the massing reduced. Okay. Second, I believe, you know, last meeting, the massing is a big concern from the commission...commissioner. Okay. Now, we get improvement from the improved massing. First of all, the baki rounded staircase is completely gone. And the living square footage for the upgrade is reduced. Not that much, but it's reduced. The new building is cutting with angle to reduce the massing. You can tell from...oh, oh. No, no. I got it. I got it. Okay. Yeah. And with this angle cutting, and then... Okay. And it will be from the south side, the massing, it could be reduced. Another thing we get did in the top of the roof, you can see right now from that picture, is cutting with the three different small roof. And that one, I believe, and also, is reduced from the south and the back north to reduce the massing too. Of course, the garage slide out is also because, you know, from the south view, you cannot tell. But actually, since it's on a different layer, so, the house is much back than the front of the garage. So, it will help, you know, reduce the massing. I don't...I cannot say how much, but it's a little bit helps. Okay. And another concern from the commission...commissioner is from the garage side, garage door side, it looks like it's a three-story... No, actually, it is a three-story. But according to the Mr. Cannon's suggestion, we are going to install the whole wall with the natural culture stone. And you can see from this one, it looks like it's a one-story. And then, the top, it's another story. So, don't look at the garage, and we will see it looks like it's a two-story. That's Mr. Cannon's suggestion, to make it looks like. Of course, we know it is a three-story, you know. And then, Mr. Cannon suggests us to use the baki. Actually, it's white, you know, the baluster. But I think that's my thinking, you know. We, if we use a dark metal railing system instead of this, so this big stuff, the huge baki stuff is gone. Since, you know, it's metal blacks railing, it's skinny, you probably cannot see it. So, it looks like, you know, the top part is from above the red line. And then, the bottom floor is underneath the red line. So, I think it may help, you know, to make this two-story looking better. The next one is the front staircase. And right now, we completely remove it, the rounded, the staircase. From the top view, you can see right now, it's only the flat part with the landing, the front landing. Instead of the older one, it's rounded. It's a huge, you know, it's a baki staircase. Yeah. Next one, we're talking about excavation. Actually, you know, since we didn't touch the driveway for the new design, the driveway will be exactly keep as is like the existing one. And then, we tried to reduce the cutting, first of all, and...oh, oh. Okay. We're pulling out to the garage, which reduce the cutting. And also, we tried to remove, eliminate the crawl space. So, without the crawl space, the total cutting right now is 25% less compared to the previous design. Like the chair last time, you know, indicate we need to indicate which tree is going to stay, which tree is going to remove clearly. So, now, we showing total, we do have the 44 tree is going to remove. Of course, you know, 40 tree is protect, which is oak tree. And another four tree, it's not. It's a plum tree. Okay. So, it's not protected tree. Remaining tree, whatever, during the construction, we are going to try anything, no matter how much it costs or how much effort we need to put on. But anyway, we're going to keep it alive. That's our goal. Okay. Last one is retaining wall for the new driveway. Okay. Before, on the previous design, we used iron block retaining wall. But now, we completely take the commission's member's suggestion. We remove that, because this one looks not match to the natural, you know, looking. So, we are going to use a concrete wall, retaining wall instead. And then, put the also culture stone like the picture to match. So, it won't be showing it too much. It's huge, you know, it's long, you know, retaining wall for the driveway. So, that's all the change we make, okay? And actually, our team is work very hard and consider any possibility follow the commission members' requirement and suggestion. All the concern from the previous meeting have been resolved to our extent possible. We will be very grateful to end approval for this revised plan. And I sincerely thank you for my, from my bottom heart, for your favorable decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Badami?
I have two, if I may. The first one being, one of the things we asked you to do is to reach out to the neighbors. So, did you do any of that? Because I don't see any record of that with the latest staff report.
Yeah. Actually, you know, for this new version, and I didn't show them. But before, I tried to talk all my neighbor adjacent to my property. Yes.
Okay. But that was from the first application. But since our last meeting, we asked you to reach out to them again with the direction that we gave you. But it appears that you did not do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. So, actually, I didn't.
Okay. So, that's one of my questions. My other concern is, I'm trying to reconcile what you said, because we had concerns about the three-story facade that's visible to other residences. So, that was another direction that we gave you, is to consider reducing it. But in trying to reconcile what you said, you're telling us that Mr. Cannon said, "Make it look like it's not a three-story. Let's pretend that it's not, but it is." So, did you consider reducing it as per the direction that we gave you, rather than just trying to pretend it's not there by putting some stone there?
Well, I believe, you know, when I talked to the city planning department... Let me go back to that picture. Yeah. If the garage is...it's...oh, oh. It's not lined up, because only this line, it's...if it's lined up with the garage, and then, it will be concerned it's a three-story. Because this part, the gray part, actually, it's way behind. And also, right now...no, not this one. The bottom is with the angle. Okay. Yeah. So, I don't know. From the definition and the planning department give it to me, before the garage, it's much more inside. So, this part is still attached to the garage. So, it's completely concerned it's a three-story. But, you know, from the definition, right now, this line, it's not touched to the garage. Garage is stopped here. So, I think, you know, and now, we should not concern it's a three-story house. But actually, you know, we still try to take the Cannon's suggestion and try to make it looks like, you know, it's a two-story.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hansen?
So, I had some of the similar...same similar line of questions. So, I'm looking at the staff report, for example, on page three. And it gives the floor area comparison. And if I read the numbers right, the...there's been an increase in square footage of 552 square feet from the last time we saw this to now. And I just wondered if you could comment on that. I haven't often...or I've never seen, actually, to date, a proposal for reducing amassing of a building that didn't involve the reduction in square footage. And I... And, and I second Commissioner Badami's comments that I, I don't think Mr. Cannon was telling, you know, giving you direction to hide the three stories. Aligned with that, there was also the issue of the garage, as I recall, the whole issue with the garage, there was a proposal from 2011, not that we wanted you to go there and do the same thing that they did, but that proposal was for substantially less of cut than was involved in this proposal, even including the revised proposal. So our thinking was, if you pulled out the garage, that you could not only substantially reduce the, the cut and the grading that's involved with that, but also, you could potentially reduce the story or reduce a level. I, I don't have all the details of the previous proposal, so I wonder if you could comment on how increasing the square footage reduces massing? And then, the second part about what I talked about, moving the garage out, you know, we were really looking for how you could basically reduce the overall height footprint.
Okay. Yeah, I believe, you know, we try to reduce the massing, that's our purpose. Okay? So that's why we try to reduce the one above the ground. Okay? That one, we did, we reduce it. But, you know, under the ground, actually, since it's hiding underneath, so in my thinking, you know, it suppose not will be increased the massing at all, because it's hiding underneath the ground. That's my thinking. I hope I answered your question.
Well, the thing is, is that there's a view of the house where even the below grade square footage, you, you can see it from top to bottom, independent of hiding it behind stone.
I believe the city concern, you know, under the ground, it's not counting the square footage.
That, that is true, generally speaking, but, but this, we're talking about the issue of overall mass, and so, so that what, what we have from the bottom to the top does pertain to that. So, you know, I'm looking at it from the big picture perspective, and, and you're correct that below grades could have square footage, doesn't count against your fire or anything like that, but it doesn't count towards your bulk and mass.
Yeah, that's why we focus on the top part, try to reduce it, you know.
Well, it was, it went down 30 square feet, or out of several thousand. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Janoff?
Just to follow along the discussion about the garage, part of the thinking in moving the garage out from under the house was not to keep it at a three-story depth and pulling it out, because that still requires quite, quite a lot of excavation. It was to pull it out and put it up, possibly in line with your, your, your middle story, we'll call it. The thinking was to, if we're going to allow the garage to be within the, outside of the LRDA at all, you still want to minimize the impact on what you're doing to the earth. So the thinking was, if we can pull the garage out from under the house, not just pull it forward, so it's still requiring a whole lot of excavation, and that three-story elevation, can we pull it up so that it's at the top of the drive where your, your turnaround area is? So that was one, one consideration. What we're looking at now, still from the west elevation and the south elevation, looks like a three-story structure on, on that corner of the house, from, from both, from both views. So I'm curious whether you considered completely taking that third-story excavation out and moving the garage to, to a higher elevation.
I believe let my civil engineer answer your question.
Hi, my name is Ned Lee, I'm the civil engineer for the project. We had approximately five meetings with the fire marshal regarding the driveway profile and the layout, so that we can provide a turnaround area. And we barely meet the minimum fire department requirement for fire access to, to this site. And so if you increasing the height of the garage, say, eight or nine feet up, we wouldn't be able to meet the fire department requirements for the roadway profile and such.
Can you give me an idea what the square footage of that turnaround area is compared to the square footage of the garage footprint? What I'm wondering is, if you move the garage from its present location out to the left end or the west end of the house, you have a large area there that can become the equivalent of the, of the turnaround.
The square foot of the turnaround area is around 2,000 square feet. It, it's not the square footage of the turnaround area, it's the height. You know, when you, you have a driveway profile approaching from Jared Lane at certain slope, and we maximize that slope already. If we, if you raise the, the garage up, that means that the driveway profile has to be steeper. And, and we got such a short distance between Jared Lane and the garage, that wouldn't be we able to lower the slope. And so the slope has to be steeper than what's the fire department requirements.
Thank you. I had a few questions. I do want to get to the public comment, though, so I think I'll hold my questions until after we get comments from the public. So thank you for your presentation for now, and you will have five more minutes afterwards. Have you, yeah, I guess all the time's been used, is that correct?
I don't need it that. My name is Steve Yan, architect, and we met before many, many times. I, in response to one of your question about...
Excuse me for one, one minute, I just want to make sure how we are, how, how much time is left for the applicant?
They had a minute and a half, but if he's responding to a question, that wouldn't be counted in the time.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm responding the area of the revised plan, which is increased. This is a very, number one, is a catch 22 project. Before, it's going outside the RDA, now it's within RDA. You can see the wall already bent to the angle. In order to make a livable, functional, functional space inside, we need a stretch a little area to accommodate the, the area that's supposed to be a squared floor plan. Now we call the skewed floor plan. That's because of that, so we may increase a certain percentage. That's, that I felt that it deserved, the reason, because you can see the curved RDA, we are prohibited to go beyond it. And now, we're working within the RDA in order to make a functionality really works, a floor plan. We need to stretch it a little bit, you understand, because, which I don't like it, but if you look at the floor plan, particular on the middle level, on sheet A2, it's quite a bit the skewed wall in order to accommodate the living style. We need an extra room slightly, so that an owner thinking that's, we have to bend over. That's the reason the square footage, instead of decreasing, we increase, but not that much, because due to the restriction of RDA. That's the floor area. Why, instead of going down, now we go, went up a little bit.
Thank you. We wanted to contain the response to the question, I believe from Commissioner Janoff was the last one. So you will have another opportunity to speak after we take public comments. So we have Mr. and Mrs., Ms. Rudolph, and they'd like the microphone back there, if we could do that, please. So just please state your name and address.
I'm Kim Rudolph, I live at 258 Jared Lane. Our house is just above this property that we're talking about now. And there are just our house and another house that was built a couple of years ago up above this property. It's, you go to the top of Vista del Monte, and you turn left into what is Jared Lane, and that's where their property is, right there on the left side in the woods. And the only reason I knew that we were having this meeting tonight was because they do have a sign posted on their property, but you have to walk past a sign that someone posted years ago, says no trespassing, that's on a, a tree there, to get down the road to see that. And if I hadn't gotten out yesterday to pick up a piece of litter and taken a really good look at the sign that you have to get out of your car and look at, I wouldn't have known there was going to be a meeting tonight. And then, my husband called yesterday to make sure there was a meeting, and they said, yeah, we didn't send out notices. And my concern is, I think, when I went down and knocked on a few doors after seeing that, and talked to some of the neighbors who will, who did, were here last time, and they said they hadn't gotten notices either, I guess they didn't send them out. I'm a little concerned. Every time we've had another meeting concerning this property, we've gotten an advance notice. And at the last meeting, I don't recall anybody saying, okay, we're not going to send out notices for the next one, you're going to have to, you know, just keep watching for it. So I'm a little concerned that maybe there would have been other people here tonight that wanted to say something about it. And that was just made my main concern, because this does impact us greatly, the, the building down there, and we wanted to be in on the meeting. So I just want to thank you for considering sending out notices or letting people know if you're not going to at the last meeting before that.
Okay, thank you. I, quick question for staff, do we usually notice continuances or...?
We do not notice continuances. The original was continued to a date certain, so if someone was watching the agenda, they would have noticed that it was again continued to a date certain, and that's how it's handled. We do not send out notices every time an item is continued.
Well, what is the difference between a continuance and just, I mean, I don't understand, if there's a meeting, shouldn't people who, who want to say something be able to be there?
Yeah. Thank you for your question, we'll address that when we discuss this matter under consideration, though. Mr. Rudolph, please.
Alan Rudolph, 258 Jared Lane. Kim's my wife, she just talked to you about the noticing issue. My concern is just like it's been before, I'm a broken record, really. I'm talking about the access problems, because the Jared Lane is very, very narrow. And so, could be very dangerous in case of an outbreak of a fire, for instance. And so, getting out would be important, but it probably just important, it's getting emergency vehicles in to fight the fire so it doesn't spread. So, yeah, everybody saw what happened up in Paradise, we had a good friend lost her house there. And we don't want to see that here in LaScata, so I would ask that the application be conditioned to make sure that no vehicles are parked on Jared Lane, because it makes it very difficult for any kind of a car to get by a parked vehicle. And in an emergency situation, getting out and getting in would be very, very important. So that was my issue again, and so it's a same thing I brought up before, but I really thank you for your time and listening to it. And I was taken by surprise by the continuance, too. There were so many continuances here, that I didn't know what was going on, and so that's why I failed to like keep up with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I had one quick question on that.
Sure.
Your concern about vehicles, is that during construction or afterwards or both?
During and after both. When the Milligan's House, which is on the other side of our property, was built over the last few years, there were several different instances where vehicles are parked on the roadside, even though they weren't supposed to do it. And when they parked there, one time, I almost killed the little boy because he jumped out of the, the truck and stuff, and I just barely stopped in time. There are lots of other times, my wife got driven off the road because a truck was backing up and couldn't see her. And so, there are big delivery trucks that come up all the time, and then there's also a bunch of construction. And in the construction, you have so many vehicles, it's really difficult to keep them just on the site. I know Sam will try and do a really good job on that, but it's just going to be a real dangerous situation if we can't keep them off the pavement.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, because there are things we can do as conditions of construction versus...
That would be great.
Ongoing, thank you. Commissioner Badami, sorry, I missed...
That's okay. So I heard your wife speak, and she said that the application, if it were to be approved, that it would impact her greatly, but I didn't hear an elaboration of what would impact her greatly, other than you saying it's specifically access problems and the inconvenience of construction. Is it limited to those two items, or are there other issues that we are, have been discussing that have to do with architecture or bulk and mass?
I'll let her talk to that, but I'll, I'll just add really quickly, there's all kinds of construction issues, but again, I'm sure Sam will be responsible in trying to keep it clean and stuff. It's just going to be really difficult when there's so much traffic going back and forth. But here's Kim's response.
Well, I'm basically concerned about when they're constructing this, because we had a lot of problems with people illegally parking on our private property, after you get past that, their property. And it was very dangerous with people parking their construction vehicles. It's a one-lane road up there, asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So we now go back to the, I don't believe there's any other public cards that I have on this. Looks like they were all the owner or applicant. So we now go back to the applicant, who now has five minutes to add any further comments about the application, and then we may have some questions for you aft, after that five minutes. Do you want to address any of the items that were either raised earlier or during the public process?
You know, I, I, I would like to suggest, you know, the recommendations of moving the garage in or moving it out. It would be very difficult to move the garage further out because of the angle of turning, coming from Jared Lane, and it would be impossible to move the garage up and meets, and meets the fire department requirement. So, you know, the, the, the garage can only move towards the high side of the hill, but not towards Jared Lane.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, this is an opportunity for the commissioners to ask questions again, if they have some. Okay, I had, I had a few. So I was trying to understand the sequence of the review by Mr. Cannon. And so, I believe that his letter is November, and that your final design is December. So my question really, I want to really understand whether you've incorporated the comments from Mr. Cannon in the design that's before us tonight. And so if I might go back to his letter of November, on page seven, he makes some comments on page six, but then on seven, there are six recommendations. And I, I wanted to see whether those recommendations have or have not been incorporated in the final design that we're seeing today, because I believe he did not review the final design. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I think what's useful here is if you look at the original design that Mr. Cannon reviewed, which is shown on page five, and compare that to the revised and updated, or, I'm sorry, suggested design on page seven, and then compare to, to the plans that are before you tonight. You would see that he, the applicant did address each of these issues with design changes, but you're correct, Mr. Cannon did not review the revised, or the, the most updated plans that are before you tonight.
Okay, so if, if someone of the applicant could address each of these, I'd appreciate that. So my first one on page seven is item one. So there's six of these. So the first one is item one, increase, increase the roof overhangs on the three main roof forms and add corbels at the soffits.
Yes, we did it.
Okay.
If you look at the plan, elevation, in other words, in general, there are six items which telling architect you take into consideration, which we did, and...
Okay. So if I could go to the next one, please?
Okay.
Integrate the entry stair into the overall building form to reduce its current added-on appearance, and specifically on that, when I look at the front elevation...
Yes.
It looks like there's an area of stucco mingled in with the...
Stone.
Stone.
Right.
When I look at the, the revised south elevation and the top, on the left side, there seems to be some stepping of what, it, it doesn't look like stone underneath the third window from the left. I'm rever, I'm referring to the revised south elevation in the, in the current plans, exhibit 21.
Basically, you're right. Only two major exterior material involved. One is the stone, the other one is the stucco.
So what's, what's the reason for having that as stucco on that ground floor?
Stucco on the ground floor?
On the left.
You talking the garage level or one floor above? Because it's basically, in order to make this building, maybe like a previous one, previous one, we use the stone mixed with the stucco. So during the revision's time, we didn't change, we didn't change the stucco to wood or any other materials. So we kept the stucco as a main exterior elevation and mingled with... So we kept the stucco as a main exterior elevation and mingled with the stone. Okay?
Okay, I'm going to have them put that up there so we can refer to the same drawing.
Sure.
And I'm referring to the upper-left portion of that elevation. That portion there. What is that material?
That's the stucco.
Okay. So is that complying with Mr. Cannon's suggestion? Or what's the thinking on, maybe you just explain to me why you'd like that to be stucco compared to the...
Basically, we have to look not only this elevation, because the 3D dimension, you look around it to the west elevation, which is sheet, next sheet. It's a... Next sheet is a west elevation.
Yes.
On my drawing is a sheet A6, which is for pedestrian and vehicular entrances. Yeah, okay, I see. This is the elevation orientation, what I'm talking about. Yes, west elevation, which is, everybody is talking this elevation from a distance, too. It's, this is a car moving out. It's a one-story flat roof. In order to reuse the massing. And of course, we have two garage. Also because of fire, we need a main door to the exit.
Sure. I'm specifically asking about the materials that are used on the...
Of course, this is a pedestrian walk up, goes through the roof of the garage to the entrance. So you eliminate a mass up behind it. So over this area, we use the stucco.
Maybe, you know, maybe you could take the microphone and walk over to it, because I'm not exactly sure what you're indicating.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Basically, this is kind of a mix together with the stucco, stone on the other side, which on the lower level. And this is the entrance coming down. So this one, it's separated from there. So we use the stucco as an entrance. And which is no, this is the main reason. It doesn't mean Mr. Larry Cannon really liked that one. Because that's my subjective architectural design. Then coming to this one, it's building. Talking about this side, actually basement, this one is an excavated area, is dirt behind it. And in order to do that, same captain mentioned, this look like a two-story, because Larry recommended use a stone. To me, I follow the Mrs. Cannon's recommendation, use a stone throughout the hill. And also on the other side...
Right. My question really was about that south elevation and that portion on the left, which appears to be a different material. And really, what I'd like you to address, if you could, please, is how that's integrated into the overall building form.
That portion, sorry about that. This portion is garage, which is underneath, half underneath the dirt. And this is driver up to here. This is roof with a baluster, because otherwise people can fall down. And over here is beyond that, which is the stairway coming down with a cascaded look, the stairway there. This portion, I emphasize it with the stucco. When you turn around with west elevation, still, we maintain that the material. I didn't using stone to clad the entire, otherwise it look too longitudinal and monotonous. So I break it up. That's the main reason.
I see.
Okay?
Okay. Maybe if I could move on then. Number three was to add balustrades, and it looks like you've done that. Item number four is to integrate the bay window with the balustrade and add supporting corbels and additional trim. I'm back on page seven of the Consulting Architects' November 13 letter. So let you get back to that page. So that is item number four. Integrate the bay window with the balustrade and add supporting corbels and additional trim. Was that accomplished in the final design?
We do accomplish that. Integrate the bay window with the baluster and add supporting corbels and additional trim. Okay? If you look back to the south elevation, you can see three layers of baluster on the floor, on the roof. The first one over the garage roof. The second one is over the high level, which is skewed wall over that area. Skewed wall is hard to put the tile there. It has to be flat, easy, not only easy, because the geometrical fault doesn't land it to a pitched roof. So we create a baluster there. And then the baluster has to be certain height because of safety issue. And that's the second layer, second level on the top. The very top one, which is on the roof, that one to myself, it's a little bit overkill of, but I followed Mr. Cannon's recommendation. He think that one give you a formal architectural look for Spanish look. But I have a little opposite view to that.
Right. I will have a broader question on the architecture. I just want to get through these as well. So number five is use wider frames on all windows consistent with the formal architectural side. Did you do that?
Yes. Basically, that thing is hard to show on the plan.
Right.
I talked to him verbally. I said, what do you mean by that? He means, I don't want you use vinyl window. I want to use a wood clad metal window. If you look at this page A5, exterior finish schedule, down to number, we have six different materials. And number four, coming from top, is called a metal clad wood window and of white. This on the drawing is hard to say that. It's expressed from the finish schedule. It's a wood.
But you've used wider frame windows than what you originally...
I talked to him. Wider means at minimum around two and a quarter inch thick, instead of vinyl like a three-quarter inch. So that's, he agreed to that. Okay? So number five, I use a frame, yeah, number five, we accomplished very, very well.
Okay. And number six, inset the window frames on all windows consistent with the formal architectural style.
Okay, same thing. Six and the five means a similar thing. Instead of using the flimsy framing, you got to use some kind of, of course, in the original, old day use wood. Now wood, it doesn't last longer, so use wood and metal clad. Outside is metal, inside is wood. That's, six means that.
Okay. I had one more question, if the commission would indulge me. It's related to the architectural style.
Sure, go ahead.
And that is the overall style, which has evolved into a more formal style.
Right.
And I was struck by how different the home looks. You know, this, from a style perspective. And, you know, going back to Mr. Cannon's comment about his preference for the original architectural style. I wanted to understand your thinking about moving to this much more formal architectural style, and particularly our guidelines having to do with neighborhood compatibility and compatibility with the hillside. So coming to us with an application with a different architectural style, I want to come back to, is this compatible with the neighborhood in terms of style?
Very good question. Basically, the original design is more like blending into the neighborhood. There's one house behind us on the high level. They build with the Spanish look. This one, the first time I approached with that, tile roof, red color, stucco, and without the very formal baluster on the roof, and with a pitched roof, which is from a functionality, which is correct, really blending to the community. This one, because of skewed configuration on the wall, it's very difficult to put this, as I said before, pitched roof, or hip roof, or gable roof, very difficult. Otherwise, it becomes a mass. It's a nightmare for architect design. So we put it, we're trying to blend this skewed wall into the regular wall. We come up with something. And of course, we presented to architectural consultant Larry to look at. Larry looked at this thing, he said, this one is look a little boxy. But if you, this is because you guys want this floor within our ADA, there's no exception. I got to give you some suggestion. Put this stone as high as possible, so to reduce the look of the building height. And he suggested using baluster. That's why we designed the baluster. He reviewed, I talked to him over the phone. He agreed to the style. But as far as I'm concerned, I still thinking it's not quite blending into the community.
So did you consider reducing the square footage of the house to retain some of the elements of the original design with the articulation and the more subtle roofing and those type of things?
Certainly, I tried to reduce it. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, that because this irregular shape of the floor plan, it's very difficult to read. You can reduce the size. However, once you come into the room use, the functionality of each room, you probably within a irregular shape, maybe the room size, it cannot be bigger so that you can achieve the same functionality as a, under a squared wall area. So even I think about to reduce, but it's very difficult. That's why I responded at a question that because the shape of that, it was forced within the ADA area. So we increased, instead of opposite, we decreased by few, I don't think more than 1,000 square feet, a few hundred square feet, which is...
293.
Yeah. It's not a very significant percentage. Because number one, we want 100% within our ADA. When you dealing the commercial building, probably easier. But residential, it's difficult, particularly we have a surrounding house in the woods. And this one, after all, we look at the top the owner, this whole thing is within a woods. And it's not noticeable.
Right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
So I wanted to circle back a little bit on the massing. So I heard your comments. And when we asked you to consider pulling out the garage, we understood that that was a trade-off. We, our hillside guidelines don't really want you to build outside the LRDA. You have a difficult property. It's hard not to do that. We did it with the idea in mind that if you pulled it outside of the LRDA, that we could reduce the height of the building. And so I guess what I thought was we would have one less level. And so right now, you have the main house, and then you have the mid cellar, and then the lowest level is the garage. Unless I'm missing something. But in what we heard from the civil engineers, we can't realistically, based on the design of the driveway, pull the garage out from under the house. So now we haven't really accomplished anything, because now we're more outside of the LRDA than we were in the original proposal, and we haven't reduced the bulk and mass. And in fact, the overall square footage, as I pointed out earlier, even though we don't count the cellar, has increased. But this whole idea of the three levels of the house is, I think, the issue. Because you have two below-grade levels, that's that much more digging.
Can I ask if there's a question?
So my question is, did you actually consider doing some meaningful reduction? Thank you for directing me. Did you think, consider like a meaningful reduction? I know we talked about before some of the things in the mid-level. Could they've been put on the top level to get one of those levels out?
You repeated that a little bit, last your recommendation.
My question was, did you consider in the, our request for reducing massing, any ideas about removing a level from the house by taking some of the rooms and maybe put them on the top level or... Because that would, to me, would be a way to reduce massing. Did you consider any idea like that?
In the future, maybe we can do it. But tonight, I don't know how to do it within, given the program from the owner. It's a, unless owner is bend over that, okay, I will reduce certain areas. Architect, of course, they can forge and make it smaller. But with, given the previous programs, given from commissioners' requirement, sliding garage out and build it within our ADA, less massing. When you look at the thing, of course, you got to look at the total environment there. And as I mentioned, this is, it's not a very visible building from anywhere, from a top view. If you fly drone over there, you don't see anything, because everywhere is trees. Back to your question, I don't know how we can reduce, particular with this ADA restriction. If I were given, again, you cannot go beyond our ADA, the house footprint, unless the owners say reduce it, otherwise it's hard.
I think you answered my question. You didn't consider that in this provision. And I understand the complexity. You had the trade-off of the stuff. So I think you answered my question. So we'll figure out where to go from there.
Yeah, when I take over this revision, we follow the original program. Because I was not a totally informed owner that I want to move the swimming pool out, which is, could be quite a bit, you know, positive way to reduce the mass, because that takes time. He needs that one because of his health. Okay? He mentioned it last time. Doctor recommended he swim every day. That's why he built a small lap pool there. Eight foot wide by 60 feet long, something like that. That's a volume. Architect dealing with not only floor plan, with volume. That's why, because the volume, so make other things kind of like domino effect becomes a bigger. Unless he changed the program, otherwise architect at this point in time cannot consider smaller house, smaller version house over the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have a question? I had one minor question on trees.
Okay.
I was trying to reconcile, because last time I pointed out that the tree plan was not legible. And then I see that you have been able to retain many trees over what we saw last time. I wanted to verify that I have read that correctly. So it looks like you're only showing the trees that are being retained, not the ones that are being removed on your current plan. So my question is, it appears that you're saving 23 out of 27 trees that I asked about. So is that, is that correct, that you've been able to retain an extra 23 trees?
I believe with your input last time, we took quite a bit of thinking, dealing with the landscaping designer. The answer to, you have seen there, is correct answer.
Okay.
Twenty-seven down to 24.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. If we have no other questions, then we will close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if commissioners have any questions of staff or wish to comment or start a discussion on this item. Commissioner Birch?
I'm happy to start a discussion, that I hope we can decide if we're all in agreement. We've seen this property a few times. And I felt like in the last meeting, we went to great lengths to be very clear of what we all meant with the massing, particularly in the view from the, I think, the west side. In my opinion, having driven around that corner, once, you know, the trees are thinned out and a few things, that actually will be quite visible. And even, I agree with what Commissioner Hanson was saying. The idea had been when we moved the garage out, that we actually broke up that massing, not just made it more of an L shape, which is what it appears to be now. I also felt that in bringing it into the LRDA and doing those things, we were asking, as part of reducing the massing, that probably the square footage would go down a little bit, create a little bit more articulation with the mass. bit, create a little bit more articulation with the massing. And I'm not seeing that. So, I would have a hard time supporting the application today, just because I feel like the goal that we were attempting to reach has not been met. And based on the answers I heard to the questions, I'm not sure, at least within this iteration, that I have these suggestions to make it get to that point. But I would love to hear everyone else's opinions.
Commissioner Badami?
I would agree with Commissioner Birch just stated, and even the consideration of continuing this again, and giving more guidance and direction. I thought we've been quite clear, and there's been several opportunity. And quite frankly, most of our direction was not taken. I think we can agree that this is a very difficult site. But when you buy a difficult site, you know what you bought, and you build to the constraints of the site. This house is designed, does not fit the constraints of the site. I have a real issue with a nineteen-foot cut, where eight is the maximum. It's just an excessive deviation from our hillside design standards and guidelines. It tells me that the house does not fit the contours of the land, and therefore, does not meet the intent of our hillside design standards and guidelines. So, I would have a difficult time lending an approval to this, or at this point, even granting a continuation.
Commissioner Hanson?
I agree with what Commissioner Birch and Commissioner Badami said. Where I was going with the comments about the levels is, it's not about visibility, because that is a fairly remote area. But our hillside design guidelines have a lot of features to them, and the biggest one that Commissioner Badami mentioned is this cut and fill. And the maximum is eight feet, and, you know, we started out, we're at twenty-four, and you got it down to nineteen, but that's still more than twice as much as that. So, there, it seems to me, there has to be a design out there that could be closer to the ideal. We did accept, in our last hearing, that the driveway was gonna be what it's gonna be, because that was the only thing that would satisfy the fire department. So, we accept that. But the house, it's kind of up to, you know, you could decide what you have to have, or you don't have to have. But cutting that much of the hillside to make the house that you want, might not be the right thing for this property. And so, I'd be willing to hear it again, if there was a legitimate effort to really try and reduce the massing, so that we don't cut so much of the hillsides. And also, I think that the request to reach out to the neighbors was not met, and I, you know, would want to hear more about that. Particularly because not any, hardly any of the neighbors are here. So, I'd be willing to hear it again, but I couldn't support the proposal as it stands right now, because I don't feel like the direction and that to be more in line with the hillside design guidelines has been met.
Other commissioners? If I may, I have one comment on this, and it sounds like we, at least my sense is that there's still a number of issues with the property. And it, on the one hand, I see some real pluses in this iteration of the design. And I see the reduction in excavation. I see the preservation of trees. I see listening to us about the garage, although it may or may not have been the optimal solution. I see the change in materials on the retaining wall, that's much more compatible with the hillside. And I also see the, the, meeting the L RDA for the main residence as positives, and taking that from feedback. However, I think there are a number of negatives with this design. And primarily, I see almost a false dichotomy, you know? Take the first design, which is architecturally quite good, but has issues with meeting hillside guidelines. Or take the second design, which is architecturally not as good, and boxy, and more formal, and less neighborhood compatibility. And so, my hope would be that there would be a third option, which would be to look at the first architectural design and incorporate more in that sense, without the formality, because I was not compelled that the, that the architectural style meets the neighborhood compatibility, since this has evolved a bit. Now, you know, coming to a denial or a continuance, my preference would be continuance, because I think of the, there has been effective movement in the direction. And so, I wonder if I might open the public hearing to ask a question of the applicant?
You can open the public hearing for that specific question.
Okay. So, this is, this is the question. Would you be interested in a continuance to address the items that were raised tonight?
Okay. Before we keep going, I do have a serious question is L RDA. If we can solve the problem, you can let me to make the building outside of the L RDA, it's okay. I will try to take your advice and try to revise it. If you think still need to go keep inside of the L RDA for the living space, I discussed with Steve, which is my architector, and we really, really cannot make it. That's almost impossible to keep the swimming pool inside of the house, because, you know, physically, I need it. And also, in this lot, you know everywhere is a deep slope. I have no way to put another location for the outside swimming pool, that's one reason. And also, my doctor is suggesting me to swim year round. So, if I, even, I do have the chance to build the outside swimming pool, it's useless.
Right. So, my specific question was, would you be interested in a continuance? And I believe you're saying that you'd be only interested in a continuance if the will of the commission was, were to allow you to build outside the L RDA.
Yeah, because in my mind view...
That's really what I was looking for. I can't go beyond that discussion.
Okay, only one more words.
It's really about the continuance.
Okay. Only one more words. At the beginning, first period plan, I believe, compared to two thousand and eleven's plan, and then, it can be outside of the L RDA. But now, I realize I'm wrong. So, I changed my mind, and then pushed everything into the L RDA. That's the way, you know, because step by step, and then, that's why we make this decision. So, now, it's your, you know, way to let me know, and how to make it. I really don't know how.
Okay. Thank you for your response. We will take that into consideration into our deliberations. So, Commissioner Janoff?
Just in discussing where we go from here. It's, the purpose of the L RDA is to minimize the impact of cut and fill, period. I would be willing to hear a continued, granted continuance, so we could see another design, not promising outside the L RDA, but asking the applicant to make sure that the cut and fill is much more substantially within the hillside design guidelines. One of the reasons for recommending pulling the garage out was so that we reduce the amount of cut and fill. So, if it didn't work on the design as presented, and they can achieve that by inching into the L RDA, I think that's a, for me, that's a preferable design to making a nineteen-foot cut, straight down into the hillside. That's my opinion about encroaching it outside of the L RDA.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Birch?
I have a question of staff. How many times has this been continued?
So, it's been continued a number of times, approximately six, but many of those were to allow for additional time to do redesigns. I believe this is the...
Third?
Third? This is the third hearing that you've actually conducted regarding an application.
Okay. If I may make a further comment, then, I hear what my fellow commissioners are trying to say. I just, having sat through this three times now, do feel that we've attempted very much to have these thoughts about the excavation and the mass and the neighborhood compatibility brought into the design, and it has yet to be. And what I'm hearing the applicant and the architect say is, they are not going to reduce the square footage of the house. So, if we are going to state that it needs to stay within the L RDA, which you are exactly right, the goal is to reduce the impact on the hillside, and they don't want to change the square footage of the house, I think we're at an impasse, is where I feel like we're at. I don't think I'm gonna support a continuance, if that's the motion that's gonna be made. I think I would more support a denial, and let it go to the next steps.
Other discussion, or does someone like to make a motion and see where we come out?
All right. I will attempt, I will, I will attempt the motion. I recommend, I believe we're recommending here, denial of architecture and site application S dash sixteen dash zero five four two four eight Jared Lane, requesting approval for construction of a new single-family residence and removal of large protected trees on vacant property zone HR dash one APN five three two three four dash zero seven one. Do you need me to make any additional statements, or I assume all of the conversation will be made public record?
Well, two things. One, this is not a recommendation. So, this is, this is to deny. And then, if anyone wants to add any other direction, obviously, there's a lot of direction and information on the record, and verbatim minutes would be forwarded, should this motion pass, and should the applicant decide to appeal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Badami?
Second.
Comments before we vote on this? Anyone else like to comment? Commissioner Hanson?
I'm sorry, we're in the camp with Commissioner Janoff and Vice Chair Hudes, in that I, I do recognize that it would be very difficult to not go significantly outside of the L RDA, and keep the existing square footage. But I do think there's a design out there that has one less level, that could work, that would make some trade-offs and involve less cutting. So, I'd still be willing to hear it again, so I would prefer to do the continuance versus the denial.
I'm gonna just, yes, Commissioner Tavanna?
You know, after hearing all this, I definitely would have to say, I agree that, you know, I wanna give you the opportunity to revise your design, and from my understanding, the guidelines are pretty well-defined, so there's a give or take relationship here. So, if you can show that you can come within the guidelines, I'd be willing to support a continuance.
My comment is, I actually, once I heard the response of the applicant, that they were not willing to entertain reduction of square footage, I think we would, if they, if they stayed within the L RDA, and stayed with the square footage, I think we would still have the boxy nature of the building, and I think that it does, it raises questions about neighborhood compatibility, because that seems to be related to the formality of the architecture as well, which troubles me. And so, while I originally expressed an interest in the continuance, I feel that at this point, I would have to support a denial, because I don't think that we can accomplish the, a design that meets the guidelines at the full square footage within the L RDA. So, anyway, so that's where I stand. So, why don't I call the question in favor of the denial? Aye? That's three. And opposed? Okay. So, that's three. So, where are we on this? Then, if we have a...
So, I'll look to the town attorney. Obviously, there can be additional deliberations by the commission, there can be subsequent motions, and then see if we land on one side or the other. Obviously, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage, because we have an even number of commissioners this evening, which can result in a tie. Other than that, I don't know if the...
Well, I have a question.
Turn the mic on.
For our new commissioner, did you review any of the prior videos of the prior meetings on this line item?
I actually did not.
Okay. I don't, then I'm not sure he can...
Specifically, what happens with a tie on this motion? Is it, does the motion fail?
Well, if our new commissioner has to abstain, then we don't necessarily have a tie, which I may need to look into briefly, and so perhaps we could...
Okay. Do you want to take a minute to do that?
Yeah, we could take a minute.
Okay. This probably would be a good time for a break. So, why don't we take a ten-minute break, and we'll reconvene at eight-thirty. So why don't we take a 10-minute break and we'll reconvene at eight thirty. We have, I think, straightened this out. So I could maybe just ask the town attorney to explain why we wanted some clarification on, on the vote.
I had not been sure whether our new commissioner had reviewed the tapes of the prior meetings in light of the fact that he hadn't. He needs to abstain from this vote and so the question can be recalled.
Okay, thank you. So I will recall the question and the, we will re-vote on the, on the same issue and the people have an opportunity to vote again. So the, the motion is to deny and all in favor of denial? That's two. And opposed? Abstain, one abstention, okay. And opposed? Three. So we now have three to two to, so the motion does not pass. So would anyone like to perhaps make another motion? Commissioner Hanson?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to a date certain with the, for a couple of reasons to give Commissioner Tavanna our, a chance to review the tapes so that he can be able to vote on the issue. Also with direction to the applicant to, to follow our direction that we gave to really reduce the massing of this building with the goal of reducing the cut into the hillsides and becoming more in compliance with the hillside design guidelines and, and come up with a creative solution. Ideally, you'd get rid of, you would reduce the level of the house, find a way to make this stuff fit other places. I don't know what we would say about the LRDA until we would see it, but, but it needs to come in more compliance. So that would be my motion is to, for the applicant to work on addressing the direction we gave as well as Commissioner Tavanna to have more time to review the tapes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Janoff?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion? I just wanted to add a comment of my change of vote and my thinking behind that was that I had assumed that there was more continuity on this project. It's quite a challenging site and it's very helpful to have the view of, of the full set of the commission on this. And so my, while I will, I will be supporting this motion to continue, my sense was that unless it's, unless you really pay attention to the direction about trying to stay within the LRDA, being creative about that, I would have a hard time to support the project later and I would, you know, go back to a denial. So my sense is that, you know, for the, the benefit of the continuity, the strength of the, the work that's been done by the commission, the potential of having Commissioner O'Donnell in, when we do consider a, in a continuance, that I would, that's why I, I changed my vote on that. So the, you know, my direction with regard to any, so, so there is no requirement for a redesign, but with a continuance, you're given the opportunity to do so. And I would suggest that you listen very carefully to the questions and the direction that came from the commission. You did incorporate a number in the last iteration and I would suggest that you continue to think about that so that you can get the support of, of the commission. So that's, that's my comment. So are, were you ready to vote on this?
You can call the question. We need a date certain. I would, staff would suggest March thirteenth. And if we're not ready at that point, then we will continue to further date certain and we will also ask the applicant to do some additional outreach to his neighbors so that they can be kept in the loop as to when this is coming to hearing next.
Okay, so I need to amend my motion to say the date certain is March thirteenth?
That's, that's fine.
And so I amend it?
Acceptable of the second, or?
Acceptable.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Three. Opposed? Two. Abstain? One. Okay. So that motion passes three to two with one abstention. Okay, thank you for bearing with us on that and we're ready to move on to the next item, which is item number three, two thirty-six Las Miradas Architecture and Site Application S dash seventeen dash zero two four requesting approval for construction of a new second story addition to an existing single family residence on property zoned R one eight APN four two four two four zero two zero. Property owner applicant Eugene Wong and Gia Liu. Project planner Sean Mullen may have a show of hands from the commissioners who visited the property under consideration. Are there any disclosures by commissioners on this item? Okay. Mr. Mullen, I understand you'll be giving the staff report this evening on this item.
Thank you, Chair Hudes. Before you tonight is a request to construct a new second story addition to an existing residence at two thirty-six Las Miradas. Excuse me. The subject property is located on the west side of Las Miradas and is currently developed with a 1,495 square foot single family residence, which is single story. The proposed second story addition would add 665 square feet to the residence and increase its height to 20 feet six inches. The project is being forwarded to the planning commission because the project proposes a new second story in a primarily single story neighborhood and would be the largest in terms of FAR and floor area within the immediate neighborhood. The applicant has provided a letter of justification summarizing their need for the addition and discussing the height of the addition relative to neighboring residences, and they've also provided a summary of their neighborhood outreach. The town's consulting architect reviewed the proposal and provided recommendations to further adapt the proposed home to the immediate neighborhood. The applicant has incorporated these recommendations into the plans before you tonight. Based on the analysis detailed in the staff report, staff finds that the project is consistent with the residential design guidelines and recommends approval of the architecture and site applications subject to the recommended conditions in exhibit three. This concludes staff's presentation and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff? Okay. Seeing none, we now ask the applicant to come up. The applicant has five minutes, I'm sorry, 10 minutes. And then there may be questions of you. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Eugene Wong.
And your address, please?
Two thirty, oh, two thirty-six Las Miradas.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair and the Commissioner. My name is Eugene Wong. I live at two thirty-six Las Miradas. We are very excited to talk about our project. Thanks Sean for your great help. We really appreciate it. My presentation has three parts. Part one is the project description. Part two is the justification for the new second story addition. Part three is a personal story as a Los Gatos resident. Part one, project description. I have lived at my current home for 11 years with my wife Maggie, my son Harry, and my daughter Linda. The house is only 1,495 square feet, which is not enough for my family. Since the staff report is very thorough, I will only have a brief description about the project. We are requesting to add a new second story with 90 feet at the street side and 35 feet at the other side. Specifically, it consists of 665 square feet. The must, the max height will be 20 feet and six inches. The new addition only applies to the south half of the house. We have gone through six rounds of review comments. All comments and architecture concerns have been addressed. There is no pending issue. After making all of the changes recommended by the town's consultant architect, the current design is consistent with the residential design guidelines. It fits the architecture of my home. It is compatible with the neighborhood. Part two, justification for new second story addition. Here I present six reasons. Reason number one, like many other houses in the neighborhood, the lot size of our house is small. One story remodeling could not add much space. Reason number two, second story houses are not rare in the neighborhood. Reason number three, the neighborhood is in inevitable transition. There is an increasing growing need for new second stories. Reason number four, such growing need for new second story addition has already been recognized by the planning commission. On April 21st, 2015, I was here to witness approval of project for two forty El Cajon Way. From that project, we knew two facts. Fact A, the town has recently approved new second story addition, which is only one house away from ours. Fact B, the house, the town has recently approved to build large home, which is only one house away from ours. That project requested to build a two-story house of 2,542 square feet, which is 382 square feet more than our proposal. Reason number five, such growing need for second story addition has already been confirmed again by our neighbors recently. As shown in the staff report, we have reached 63 neighbors and got their support for this project. Reason number six, our plans follow residential design guidelines. It is carefully designed and well-designed to match the existing houses. It will minimize the impact of such transition in the neighborhood. The new house is not taller and does not look bigger than some of the existing one-story houses. The design of new heap roof, entry siding, windows, doors, et cetera, will all match the neighborhood. Part three, personal story as a Los Gatos resident. In 2013, I was only a few blocks away from the Boston Marathon bombing. The world completely changed after I heard the two big explosions. We were told to be attacked by bombs. Most cell phone service were disabled to avoid future possible explosions triggered by smartphones. Public transportation were immediately shut down. We were asked to leave the area. My tired legs, which had just finished running a marathon race, magically became fresh again. At every single street I passed by, I saw police cars, cops, and even SWAT team members. To make it worse, there were quite a few false alarms caused by the bags that people left in a hurry. I saw crying parents forced to leave their area by volunteers who were also crying. I ran to the hotel to get my luggage and managed to reach the airport. After I watched deaths and injury from the TV, I started to feel very shocked and scared. A man came to me, asked me whether I was Eugene from Los Gatos. I was very surprised since I did not know him before. He showed me a webpage from Los Gatos, or from his cell phone. It was from the town or some local media listing all eight runners from Los Gatos, including me, himself, and my neighbor Andy, who is also here tonight. Obviously, all eight of us had already been contacted with. We were all reported to be safe. I felt the love and was deeply touched. I was never so proud of being a member of the big Los Gatos family. Ever since then, I ask myself once a while, what could we do for the town in return? To make our town better, one idea is to make ourselves better. With the help from the teachers, my son Harry had set up example for me. In the past a few years, he has helps, he has helped Los Gatos schools to gain national reputations in math and physics. To make our town better, we should also make our neighborhood better. We should make our house homes better. I hope the planning commissions will approve this project, give us the opportunity to renovate this small and out-of-date house, turn it into a new house conforming to the latest building code, make our dream come true. Thanks.
Thank you and thank you for your compelling narrative. Are there questions of the applicant? Okay. I had one very minor question. On the, looking at the consulting architect's report, it looks like that you followed the recommendations. There was one I wasn't positive about. I just wanted to check. On page six of the, of the architect's report, there's a recommendation that says provide first floor roof overhangs to match side elevations. Do you know if you've been able to accomplish that?
Is the architect A six?
This is from his report, from his letter on page six, and he said to provide first floor roof overhangs to match the side elevations.
I think I correct, it's corrected in the plans.
Okay. Thank you. And it looks like you've made, I'll, I'll ask staff about that as well. That was, that was my, my only question, so. Thank you very much. Okay. We now will take comments from the public. We have, the first speaker is Andrew Ferguson. And Mr. Ferguson, if you'd like to come up, you have... you have three minutes, I believe.
Andrew Ferguson, 232 on the next-door neighbor. I didn't know the story about the marathon is coming up, so it kept me a little emotional. We have good neighbors. We have a great neighborhood. I think having a neighbor support project is important, but I think not supporting this would be kind of stepping on the American dream, and I would strongly encourage you to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. And I have a card from Larry Lenhart, I believe. If I got that, oh, I'm sorry, that's, that looks like that's on a different item. It's labeled three, but it's actually four. Okay, so I don't, I don't have cards, any other cards for this item. So we will go back to the applicant. If the applicant would like, you have an additional five minutes. Okay. Thank you. Were there any other questions of the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Janoff, go ahead.
Just one other question. The architect did recommend on page five of his report that you add windows to the garage door, and I don't see those incorporated into your plans. Was that something that you had talked about with the architect not including?
I replied, because the north half of the house is not going to be remodeled this time. We will do that in the future. I think I replied.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will now close the public portion of the hearing, and would appreciate if commissioners would have any questions of staff or would like to comment on the application or introduce a motion. Commissioner Badami.
I would be in support of an approval. I'd be happy to make a motion, but I would like to see if other commissioners have discussion. I can justify the roof type per Exhibit 8, which is also reasonable to the town architect. I can support the two-story in a one-story neighborhood, especially considering the support you have of your neighbors, in particular, the immediate adjacent neighborhood that live next door to you that usually have the privacy issues. And I think it's a wonderful neighborhood, so I would introduce a motion unless people would like to comment.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second it. I was gonna just make a comment. I mean, normally, it's a red flag when the house becomes the largest house in the neighborhood, but you have to consider the overall factors and you look at where you were. I mean, we're not talking about an increase of going to a 5,000-square-foot house. I mean, you're going from 1,800, 1,900 square feet to 2,500, and so you're only slightly above your neighbor, who's the next largest. So I think the proposal is reasonable, and certainly you need the space for your family. Your neighborhood is predominantly one-story houses, but, you know, it's, with a family with 1,400 square feet, it's certainly understandable that you would, you know, want to add the square footage. And the only concern I had, but it sounds like it's all addressed, is there was so much back and forth with the consultant. As long as the placement of the second floor was where he wanted it to be, and you've met his recommendations, I'm good with it.
Yes. Commissioner Badami?
I'll formalize the motion then. So I move to approve Architecture and Site Application S-17-024, requesting approval for construction of a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence. I can make the required findings for CEQA, and I can make the required findings for compliance with the residential design guidelines per Exhibit 2.
And the second?
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to add a comment that I think the way that you've approached this with your neighbors and the way you've iterated the design based on feedback is, you know, not only exemplary, I think it adds to the character of what you've evolved to in your house, and I think it also contributes to the town in terms of fitting in, so I will be in support of the motion as well. So I'm gonna call a question in favor. Okay, I have six, and obviously no opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay.
There are appeal rights.
Oh, there are, are there appeal rights?
Yes, yes, there are. So anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. There is a form available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to item number four, which is 114 South Santa Cruz Avenue, Conditional Use Permit Application U-18-020, requesting approval for a restaurant with beer and wine service. Hoppus Brewing Company on property zone C2, APN 51045061. Property owner, 102 South Santa Cruz LP. Applicant Brian Edwards. Project planner, Jocelyn Schupman. Well, before we do that, I just want to get a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the property. Okay? Any disclosures? Okay. Ms. Schupman, would you please give us a report?
Thank you Chair, and good evening Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for a restaurant with beer and wine service by the applicant Hoppus Brewing Company. The applicant is proposing to operate a taproom restaurant with rotating beers, wine, and food service. The proposal includes interior renovations to the existing building, as well as modifying the existing parking lot to accommodate a new outdoor seating area. Proposed hours of operation would be seven days a week from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and these hours of operation are reflected in your conditions of approval on Exhibit 3. The staff report provides a summary of the review by the town arborist, with one tree to be removed based on the proposed improvements to add an additional parking space to the property. A desk item report was also distributed to the commission this evening, which includes public comments received after the distribution of your staff report. Staff recommends that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the council based on the analysis provided in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Hanson?
I looked at this thing, and it, although it sounds reasonable, for all the hours of operation seem to be long, and so I was just wondering if you had looked at the hours of operation from other restaurants in the area, and if it was comparable to that.
No, staff did not do that as part of our analysis.
Okay. We can ask the applicant.
So I had a question about the use, and so the documents I have in front of me say a restaurant with beer and wine service. The term "taproom" I did not see in the summary of the application, but it was raised by a neighbor, and it was raised in documentation. My understanding is that a taproom is a bar. It's commonly translated as a bar or bar room. Would there be any difference in the application if we were, it were not termed a restaurant with beer and wine, but were termed a bar?
So the term "taproom" originally came from the applicant's project description, which is included as Exhibit 4. And so regardless if it was a taproom or a restaurant, the use includes beer and wine service, and so we would still consider it to be that and require a conditional use permit.
And I would just add that if it was a bar, as the town defines it, it would not have to have food service. So that's the distinction for the town. Restaurant has food service. A taproom where they don't have food service, I've seen those, and there's some that call themselves taprooms, but they also have food service. So that's why we distinguish it as a restaurant with beer and wine service.
And as a follow-up to that, since the CUP follows the land, then any subsequent tenant could only do beer and wine if they had a restaurant, even though the application was for a taproom?
That's correct, and that would, the way that that could be accomplished would be they could come in and request a modification to the use permit to remove the restaurant requirement, and then it would be a bar.
Right. And that would come back to?
That would come back to Planning Commission and the town council.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's see if the applicant would like to make a presentation. I have several cards. Mr. Edwards, is that correct? Okay. Please, if there's two of you, just go ahead and state your names and your address when you come up here, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and the committee for seeing us tonight and considering us. My name is Brian Edwards. The address for our project is 114 South Santa Cruz Ave. As staff mentioned, this is for a taproom, and I can clarify the definition. I think there's a lot of terms that get thrown around, but we currently operate a full brewery in San Jose, in the Willigan neighborhood of San Jose, so we brew our own beer. This new location would also serve the same beers, so in that sense, we are just an extension of our current taproom in San Jose. So we are just pouring the beers that we make. Our liquor license allows for us to serve food, and along with serving food, we are granted the right to serve wine as well. So I wanted to start just by kind of introducing myself and my business partner Derek. We are Los Gatos natives. I grew up here. I was a Van Meter Fisher, Los Gatos High School graduate, a class of 01. Derek is class of 03. We met over at Blossom Hill playing Little League together. As I mentioned, we opened up Hoppus Brewing Company in Willow Glen in January of 2017. So it's been almost two years now that we've been running our brewery there. I was welcomed with open arms from the community over there. It's been a journey and a great learning experience for us, and really fun, and we're looking forward to expanding into our hometown that we hold very near and dear to our hearts. The proposal, the taproom that we're talking about now, is, a bar would be a bit of a misnomer because we're not gonna be serving hard alcohol. We're not gonna be staying open till 2:00 AM. We are family-friendly. Our current place in San Jose is family-friendly. We have kids there with parents all the time. Very casual environment. You know, it's just something that's sort of missing from the downtown corridor, a place where you can go with your family, sit down, have a casual beer, have something to eat, and call it a day. We love being part of our community in Willow Glen, and we love Los Gatos, and we look forward to being part of it. In fact, we participate in a lot of community stuff in San Jose and in Los Gatos. We've contributed to almost every school in San Jose, whether it's donations, we've done auctions, we've hosted fundraisers. We've even participated in LGAA events out here. We've supported the Lions Club. I did a fundraiser at the Toll House, actually, for Van Meter to help them raise money for the school. So I mentioned who we are. I also want to talk about what we're not. So I said we're not a bar in the traditional sense of what a bar is. You know, we're not gonna be open late, no loud music. We're not gonna have, we don't have any plans to do any kind of outdoor entertainment or live music. The space just wouldn't be big enough to accommodate that. And we're happy to abide by the noise ordinance. I know our hours say 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, but we'd be willing to close the patio down early at 10:00, if that helps assuage any issues. And I know that there were some concerns, as mentioned. We got some letters, and I saw those. So I wanted to just address some of the stuff that was said. Of course, noise was an issue, but as I mentioned, we'd be amenable to closing that patio portion early to keep the noise levels down. Parking is an issue, but the plans that we've submitted have been run through the parking calculations and have been found to be in compliance. We plan on being a no-smoking establishment even outside. All of our bartenders at our current location, and will extend to our new location, are trained in how to serve alcohol and how to identify people who have been overserved and therefore avoid that issue. And our beer garden is going to be contained. We are gonna have planted boxes and bullards to contain the beer garden, so we don't have people drinking. There'll be no drinking outside of those constraints, so that would keep that contained and not have people wandering around the neighborhood while drinking. That's all. If you had anything?
Okay, thank you. Are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Janoff?
Thank you for your presentation. Just a question about neighborhood outreach. Did you contact the neighborhood up Broadway and the residents in that neighborhood?
We did, we did. Sorry, I meant to mention that. Yes, we did. We made little postcards, and then we went around, actually Derek went around, and handed them all out to the neighbors. We did hear back from a few of them positively. Actually, we're the only ones that sent us emails, but we did notify everybody ahead of time.
So just to follow up, we have heard recently an issue regarding the Toll House and the concerns of the Toll House noise and impact on the immediate neighborhood. And so your outreach with your neighbors, are you saying that you haven't, you haven't received, I mean, we have, we have one concern, I think, in our package?
Yeah. We got two emails, one from a neighbor, so the postcard had our email address on it, and we received two emails. One was from a neighbor, Mike, what was his last name? Mike Vergas? Verga, I think? And one from a business, the spa. And we spoke to both of them. Mike was supportive, as long as we, as long as we are what we said we were gonna do. And Derek spoke with the spa, and it sounds like their concerns mostly are with parking. And as I mentioned, the parking plan has been found to be in compliance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I have two questions for you. The first one is about food, and the second one's about the hours.
Sure.
I did some research on your Willow Glen location, and if I, my research was correct, you don't offer food at your Willow Glen location, so this is new, and the comments that people were making about your place were all good, but the comments were along the lines of, "Good thing there was food trucks all around that they could get a meal." And I looked at what you were going to offer with the food, so I wondered, is that gonna be enough? Because we're not gonna have food trucks by your location.
Correct.
Is the very limited menu with all that beer gonna be enough?
So our menu is also, it's, you know, we're open to adjusting that. We're regulated by the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, and they are the ones who dictate what is considered sufficient to get these other privileges of being able to serve wine. So we've initiated conversations with them. We, it's kind of a loose definition. The definition is bona fide eating establishment, which just means you're serving a menu of food at hours at which people would eat. So it's not a super hard and defined definition. So we are gonna work with them to make sure that we are meeting those requirements, which, you know, they are the ones that set the regulations as to what would be sufficient to serve with beer.
Okay, fair enough. I was, what I was looking for is kind of your experience. I do understand the alcoholic beverage policy, but, I mean, since you're not doing it at your Willow Glen location, the fact that you're doing something is gonna be, you know, and then there are other places around.
Yeah, and actually, our third business partner, who, he lives in Santa Rosa, so he wasn't able to make it, but he, and I was his brewer up in Petaluma, that was a brewpub, so it was actually a full restaurant. So we do have that piece that we are missing, you know, in our experience. We do have some experience in the restaurant business.
Okay. So my other question was, I'm looking, asking about what's a justification for being open from 11:00 to 11:00 every day, because in researching your Willow Glen location, if I read it correctly, your hours are 4:00 to 9:00 on weekdays, 11:00 to 9:00 on Saturday, and 12:00 to 7:00 on Sunday, and so I wondered why it needs to be 11:00 to 11:00 in Los Gatos?
I don't think it necessarily has to be that. We were just worried about getting, we just wanted to throw it all out there and not pigeonhole ourselves with our hours. I mean, I don't foresee us being open at 11:00 AM on a Monday. That just wouldn't be a good business, and there's not a lot of people drinking at that time, hopefully. And as I mentioned, we'd be amenable to closing the patio earlier to abide by the noise ordinance.
Would you be amenable if it was the will of the rest of the commission to changing the hours order in the CUP, proposed CUP?
Yeah, we would definitely be open to that.
Okay, thank you.
If I might follow up to that, are there specific hours that you would be comfortable with?
I think similar to what we're doing in San Jose would work. I mean, we kind of, our conditional use permit for San Jose allows us to stay open till midnight. We sort of arbitrarily picked 9:00 PM as a time to close when we first opened. We were commuting from San Francisco at the time, and that just made sense. I think we would probably want to be at least till 10:00 PM in Los Gatos. Not necessarily we're gonna do that, but we would like to at least have that option. I know if we're gonna be closed on Mondays, like we are in San Jose, that's fine as well.
Okay. Thank you. Other, yes, Commissioner Virch?
I want to talk a little bit about the possibility of music or entertainment. You may or may not know, we, in the last year, went through, two years, a very lengthy a very lengthy process with the Toll House and the neighbors around there. And I want to be very sensitive to the amount of work that went into that. And so we've set limitations on the noise level, the timing of the music. What kind of entertainment are you thinking you may have as far as live music? Would it be on the patio or inside? Can you give us a little more insight?
As of right now, we don't necessarily have plans to do any live entertainment. I don't speak for the team entirely, but inside, probably wouldn't make any sense. It's after it's all said and done with cold storage, dry storage, bathrooms, bar, there's just not going to be that much square footage inside to accommodate any kind of live music. Outside, I don't, I mean, I could never imagine a scenario where we'd bring like a whole band and with amplified music. If anything, I could envision us having like an acoustic guitar and maybe strumming on that and singing some tunes. We do some live music in San Jose, but, you know, we're allowed to and it's a much bigger space, so it works. But we do have some artists that come, actually some local artists that come who do music similar to that, that will just play an acoustic guitar and sing.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, would you be amenable to a live music which was acoustic only?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Tuvana.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do you plan to, following to the entertainment question, do you plan to have any TVs or games on on the weekends or during the week for that matter?
We do. So in our current San Jose location, we have three TVs. We don't have any, we're not a sports bar, so we don't have any special packages or anything. I mean, during football season, we don't even open for the early games. We encourage people to enjoy each other's company and not sit in front of a TV and watch it. But we probably will have something just for some background noise. And not even noise, because we don't even play sound, but just something to look at.
Okay, thank you. We will have another opportunity for questions, so I would really like to take public comment now. So you'll get another five minutes, okay? So now I would invite Mr. Ken Nelson, if you're here. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ken Nelson. I own and operate Rural Supply Hardware at 110 South Santa Cruz Avenue. And I haven't met these gentlemen. They seem like nice guys. I wish them well. But we already share the parking lot with the business next door, the spa, and Number One Broadway upstairs. And that goes on well into every evening or most evenings. And the parking lot is full. It's absolutely full many, many times. The parking lot will be maxed out. And so I don't really understand how we could possibly lose parking for a business. And the impact of just additional business would be really a big deal for that corner. We're not open in the evenings. We close at 6:00 PM. But we do have to deal with the mess and the cleanup and the wear and tear on the parking lot. And it's an old tired building and lot, and it does have its impact. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Tim Nelson.
Tim Nelson, Ken's brother, also from Rural Supply, 110 South Santa Cruz Avenue. And I've talked to a lot of the businesses in the area and the neighbors, the residents. A lot of concerns. Our biggest concern is parking. There simply is not enough. The planning that they talked about, the parking issue that they talked about, goes back to a 1980s parking district that really never came to fruition. Those spots aren't there. They don't exist. They're all phantom parking places, was what they were termed. The fact is, there is not enough parking. I have worked at that location since 1974, in the very building that they're looking at, for 37 years. And now we vacated that building when they felt it was worth a lot more money. And so now, after having been there working for 44 years now, I know probably better than anybody in this room, there simply is not enough parking. The spa is a busy place. Number One Broadway is a busy place. The lot is full all day, probably 80% of the days. It's completely full. Now they want to take away parking, create a need for more parking. I just don't see how it could possibly work. Our lot is neighboring theirs. There is an invisible property line. And no one's going to respect that. We're going to have no parking left for our customers. And that's our concern. That's our business. That's our bread and butter, our livelihood, as well as the spa. The Number One Broadway may not be represented here tonight, but that should be a concern for them as well.
Thank you. Maybe as a follow up to that, have you considered any, if the business has a right to parking and has a right to be there, have you considered any ways to delineate fence, otherwise further establish your parking versus the parking for that business?
Yes, I've spoken with my landlord. There is absolutely no agreement in place that allows them to park in our parking spots. We can put a fence, and she completely supports that. The bad thing for them is it makes them almost a landlocked piece of property back there. You can tell, they did a very good job drawing it. You can see that it's a very strange shaped piece of property. If we did put up our fence, they would lose an additional two parking places in order to access theirs and only have access off of Broadway. No longer any access off of Santa Cruz Avenue.
Thank you. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Tuvana.
Just a quick question. What are your general hours of operation?
We're open eight to six.
Eight to six every day, seven days a week?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Shredar. And I'm the owner of the subject property. The subject property is essentially 114, but it also includes the real estate that is occupied by the spa and by Number One Broadway. I want to start very quickly by addressing, or at least talking about the parking issue. The real estate, the way it is set up, has very, it's very clear which parking spots belong to the Rural Supply building, which is not a part of the real estate that we own. So the rest of the parking spots belong to the three tenants and the property that I own. Those three tenants, again, are Number One Broadway, this particular subject property, and the spa. And I believe that the parking issues have been dealt with as far as this application. So I think, also, I'd like to point out that on that parking, in the parking area, there are very clear signs that are posted that demarcate the difference between the Rural Supply and 114 South Santa Cruz parking, the spa parking. So, you know, parking is limited all over Los Gatos, but I do believe that this application has complied with the parking. That being said, a quick background. I live one house away from Los Gatos, and much of my extended family lives in Los Gatos. I'm one of the larger landowners in town. I fully vetted out this particular tenant, and I'm in 100% support of his application. I'd also like to let the planning commission know that I've spent quite a bit of money on this property because I acquired this in 2014. And I had to spend quite a bit of money to bring utilities from Broadway to the site. I've spent several hundred thousand dollars upgrading the roof, the subsystems of the property. And I have been sitting vacant now since 2014. This is not an easy property to lease. It does not lend itself to retail. And all of the interest that we have received has been from service oriented businesses that tend to be a little intensive on parking anyway. So, but these are the types of businesses that have come to us. That being said, I'm in full support of this. I've actually been to the bar. I've been to, as far as Number One Broadway, we own that bar. We don't have any concerns about any parking issues. I've also been to the brewery that they own. And it's a family oriented place with the dogs and kids. I think this is something that we need. And I think this kind of activity, Los Gatos, is what we need.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So I had one, and that is that if Rural Supply were to build, put in a fence, as they indicated, I don't know whether they have the right to or not. I'm just saying that based on their representation, if they did, would this still be feasible if, in fact, it had a loss of two parking spaces in order to access?
I would have to look at exactly how that plays out. But when I purchased this property, I did an extensive legal analysis on it. I believe we have a prescriptive easement to come across that land. And I don't think it's as straightforward as putting a fence on it. Also, if a fence was constructed, it would need city approval. And I don't think this is as straightforward as somebody coming up and putting a fence. I don't foresee that to be an issue at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next speaker is Larry Lenhart. I don't know if I got that right, but, okay.
Hi, my name is Larry Lenhart. I live on 30 Broadway, which is directly across the street from the, which backs into Number One Broadway, but directly across the street from the house that's next to this property. First, I would highlight, we didn't receive any information about this. We heard about it last night from an email from one of the neighbors that did get a message. Many of us were out of town over the holidays. Another two houses that are abutting this place are being reconstructed right now. So they certainly weren't reached out to. We weren't. It sounds like nice guys, but we have no idea about this until we saw it online just yesterday. One of the gentlemen did get it. His house abuts right into the property. You can see his email and his email, which is in your document, which is obviously totally against this. First, I would highlight that this is the most unusual thing I've seen for a restaurant or a bar in the town. We have bars that are on the street or close to Santa Cruz. This is a bar that is going to be 300 feet off of Santa Cruz, directly into the residential community, abutting houses, family properties, and retirement community. Number two, to have outdoor entertainment next to people's houses till 11 o'clock, amplified music, which is asked for in the CUP, 50 people outdoors, 50 people outdoors drinking, playing cornhole, is louder than amplified music. This is going to be a very, very loud process and really going to mess up a lot of families, in particular our family and the other families that are in Broadway. We have five restaurants within 300 yards of this restaurant, of this bar. All five are all inside. The ones that are outside face Santa Cruz and have a building behind it. So that includes Willow Street, the burger place, Number One Broadway, Caccino Restaurant, and I'm missing one of them, but somebody could help me out on that one. So this is highly unusual from that perspective. The CUP goes on and lasts forever. These guys might be really nice people. What they're asking to create a family kind of bar really affects our families. So I know they don't want to do that, but they're going to affect families in Los Gatos. And they're from Los Gatos, so I hate to see that happening for all of our families that are on Broadway and our kids that are out in the yard, listening to this stuff day in, day out at night. The, I think the amplified music ask was just a mistake because we've gone through this within the town many, many times. Again, I appreciate what they're trying to do. It's the wrong location, and it's really against families. It's marked as against other zoning, but no, this is directly against people's houses, people's fences, and our life. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Virch.
If we were to look within the conditions of approval and somewhat like we did Toll House, because I do remember that you were there, we reduced the hours on the weekends outside. We definitely limited any outdoor noise during the weekdays. We discussed the kids doing homework and that you guys were in your backyards. And if we made sure that no amplified music could be played, would those type of things, bringing it more in line with the way we dealt with the Toll House, be something that you'd be amenable to, or?
You know, I can't speak on behalf of all the other neighbors on Broadway. And I'm happy to facilitate that conversation. But I wouldn't because I have seen a bar outdoors where people are outdoors. Cornhole is the best game for pregame football. And you can imagine how much noise is made. That's louder than amplified music. So I don't think that's actually feasible in that context.
Okay, thank you.
One question. The applicant had asked about, had suggested that they might have hours similar to their San Jose location. Again, if they were permitted to operate, are there hours, specific hours, that would be less of a problem for your family?
For our family, I can't comment on it. I think weekends that are associated with activities that are currently underway within Los Gatos in that context would make sense. Whether it be for the, whether it's something related to the jazz in the plaza or something that's related to maybe the Sunday market. But 11:00 to 11:00, I think, is way overdone. And I do believe the ask was so big, it makes me realize that there was no conversations with the neighbors asking for that. Asking for amplified music, asking for 11:00 to 11:00, asking for 50 seats outside. That's really over the edge. It'd be great if we'd had a conversation and actually worked as neighbors, as these guys really has highlighted they were trying to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last card, I believe. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this? Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. I'm not directly impacted by this project. I just had a couple of thoughts when I was looking at it. One is, I did quickly look up the hours for Willow Street, Blue Line, and Loma. And Willow Street closes at 9:00 PM, Sunday through Tuesday. It closes at 9:30 on Wednesday and Thursday, and it closes at 11:00 till 10:00. It closes at 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Loma Brewing Company closes at 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 on Sundays. So one of the things I would like to look at is, let's be a little data driven. Let's, because the CUP runs with the land, I don't think you say, okay, you get till 11:00 PM if you approve this, and they decide they're going to close early some days or not, because that can change at any time. So just on the face of it, if you're going to look at the hours, let's look at what's around there at the other family friendly restaurants. And let's look at those hours. Second of all, you know, I went back there. It is such a bizarre location. Now, it's not our job to pick a place that this business will succeed or not succeed at, but it's almost like a speakeasy. You cannot see it from the sidewalks. It's in the back of a parking lot. It used to be the storage warehouse for Rural Supply, which made sense. And when it switched over to retail, it seemed bizarre to me, and obviously it stayed empty. But to put a drinking establishment in the back of the parking lot, hopefully everybody will walk there. Because all I hear about on transportation and parking and as a downtown resident is how there isn't enough parking for the spa. There isn't enough parking at this end of town. I know that people with those businesses down there are always asking for novel parking solutions. Can they get permits to park on Broadway? Can we create other lots? So I know that you cannot approve the number of seats based on parking, and that's probably a good thing. People will figure it out. But it is an issue, and I don't know how it's going to resolve itself. I do feel for the residents that are immediately adjacent to this. Andy Law wrote one letter. There's also a rental complex that is immediately on the corner, and it's up against them. I'm not sure who was notified in that case. If it was the owner of the building, the owner of the building doesn't live there. I don't know if any of the residents who live there had a chance to find out what's happening or if they feel like their opinion matters. But this is buried right against them. If there is outside activity, there's not a wall around it like there is at the Toll House. So when my neighbors at that end of the street had issues with the Toll House and all these steps had to be taken to monitor the noise, realized that that was in a courtyard that had a wall around it. And this is open. So these are just my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Questions? Yes, Commissioner Badami.
In doing your research with the hours of the surrounding family type restaurants, and granted Toll House has a wall around it, did you have an opportunity to look at the hours at the Toll House with their restaurant slash bar?
I did not. I was just pulling them up as I was sitting here, so I didn't get that far. I looked up the Toll House, however, I could not remember the name of the restaurant.
The Virch, I think it is. Virch.
So I imagine staff can pull that up.
Okay, all right. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't see anyone else on this, so we will, at this point, give the applicant five minutes to... five minutes to comment on really anything you'd like.
Okay. Well, thank you for expressing your concerns. They, it is important to us to be a member of the community and to make sure that everyone is happy and okay with what we're doing. We're certainly not trying to disrupt the neighborhood. As I mentioned, we're both family men, we have young children, and so we can, we can empathize with that. As I mentioned, we are amenable to, to working with our hours. If it's being closer to the other restaurants, if it's making sure that we're in compliance with the noise ordinance, whatever it is, we have no problem changing those hours. 11 to 11 was just what we put out there so that we didn't pigeonhole ourselves into something at a later date. But if, and if that's what it's going to take, then we're happy to do that. That's what we, what we have in San Jose. As far as the parking and putting a fence up, I believe eliminating two parking spaces would put us out of compliance with the parking calculations, and then closing off the parking lot from, from South Santa Cruz, I don't think is an option, because the exit going on to Broadway is one-way per fire code. As it relates to those parking spaces, it was mentioned that the spaces in the parking lot are very clearly marked with signage. There are assigned spaces for the Rural Supply hardware, as well as for the tenants of match And as far as noise, amplified music, I'm not exactly sure what amplified music means. If that's like a band playing using amps, maybe you can tell me what that, what the actual definition of amplified music is.
We can ask staff when you're, when you're done.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, like I said, we're not, we don't have any plans to do live music, other than a guy with a guitar singing. I don't think that he would need an amp for that. You know, we, we do have a patio in our current location, we do have speakers that we do play music. I know in the Toll House, there was some monitors to monitor the noise levels. We certainly wouldn't be blasting that music, we'd be keeping at a reasonable level. What else? Yeah, I think that's, that's it, as far as I was able to jot down.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Because you're so close to your neighborhood, I, I thought in reading reviews, I looked at Yelp and Nextdoor and stuff like that, I thought in reading some reviews that, that there might be people close to your Willow Glen location. So could you comment on how, how close are you to residences in your current location, and how you, if you are, how you've been able to work things out with the neighbors? Because presumably they have the same issues as our residents.
Sure. So, and real quick, as it relates to the gentleman who, who wasn't notified, we did pass out these little postcards. I mentioned that, and maybe if you were out of town, maybe it just got lost somewhere along the way.
You can address your comments to us, please.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
We did, we did pass out those note cards, and if, if someone didn't get one, you know, something must have happened to it. But, so our current neighbors, so we are literally across the street from several large apartment complexes, and then our cross street is Azuray. There are a condo complex, as well as a park down Azuray. So we haven't had any complaints from the neighbors. In fact, a lot of them are, some of our regular customers. Granted, these are large, kind of not high-rise buildings, but you know, maybe five-story apartment complexes. So I, and some of them are brand-new. Like, when we started, when we opened, they were just empty lots, and now they're apartment complexes. So obviously, we were there before, before they could object. But I even lived at one of these apartment complexes. It's called Elements. It's directly across the street. I would walk to work every day. But yeah, we haven't had any complaints from, from any of our neighbors. In fact, I believe one of the newer complexes wrote a letter in support.
I think so, too. One, if I could ask one more question. The, on the parking issue, I mean, especially since you're a drinking establishment, I mean, what, what have, and Willow Glen has parking challenges as well. What do you do at your current location to help manage parking and not have any people drink and drive?
Well, I mentioned our bartenders are trained to identify that, as far as drinking and driving, and not over-serving people. We don't do anything in particular to encourage people to use public transportation, or ride chairs, or whatever it is. Obviously, that's, it's not, it would be nice if everyone did that, if they're going to a place to drink, but we also aren't a place that people go to get drunk. You know, we don't think of, we're not a bar in that sense, you know? We only serve the beer that we make, and these are craft beers, these probably aren't beers that anyone could drink, and you know, you're not going to slam 10 IPAs. And that's not what, that's not, that's not our vibe, that's not what we're about. You know, we're a place to come, sit down, have a casual beer, chat with friends, and in Los Gatos, have a bite to eat, you know, bring your kids. It's not that raucous, rowdy bar scene that we're going for.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Birch.
So as I was listening to different people speak, I came up with a few items to see, depending on where this went. You said that you're good with the hours changed to either match Willow Glen or other local family businesses. Live music would be acoustic only, and you're all right if, if the hours of that are limited to match other, like, sorry, I just forgot the name of the restaurant, but, the Toll House?
Verge.
Thank you. Verge. One of the things I made a note of is, you, you mentioned outdoor speakers. I would say no outdoor speakers. If you abut right to a family's home, I, I know if I lived there, I wouldn't want to have your choice in music in my backyard, so. And I was wondering also if you could answer the question of, how many people do you think would be on that patio? I heard a number that didn't seem right when I looked, but I want to double-check.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's hard, hard to say how many people, you know? We have a patio at our current location that's roughly the same size, I believe, you know, roughly 1,000 square feet, and we only have five tables out there? We have five tables out there. Each table can fit six people, so 30? And we have, we have cornhole boards, so if four people are playing cornhole, two on each team, 34-ish. I guess I, this is our architect, he, he gave me the actual numbers. Per code, 49 would be the max allowable.
I'm going to ask staff a question when it's time, but if we limited the number of people on the patio, would you be agreeable with that?
I guess it would depend on how many people.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Janoff.
Thank you. How, how large is your Willow Glen shop compared to the indoor square footage of the proposed location? For specifically your customers, not the ancillary?
Right, the production. Do you have the actual square footage numbers? Pretty, pretty similar. It's probably a little bit bigger inside. I think it's maybe almost 900 square feet inside. We were limited by our conditional use permit at that property as well. So I'd say 900 square feet inside, conservatively, and then about 1,000 outside.
Okay, and so roughly, how many persons are you expecting to be served comparably?
How many people in Los Gatos are we expecting?
Yeah.
Again, it's, it's hard to know. I mean, as a business owner, hopefully, we are successful there, but per the building code, the numbers I have are 39 inside and 49 outside.
So you're, you're, it, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're really counting on that outdoor space to maximize the viability of your business.
Yes, I don't know that we would move forward without the outside space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if I may, I have two, two questions. One about the parking. If Rural Supply were able to build that fence, which we don't know, but if they were, would that limit the viability of this business?
I think so.
So losing two spaces and the access
Yeah.
would sort of be the end of it?
It would be, it would make it harder to justify, for sure, yeah.
Right. The other question I had is, really relates to some differences in this business than what I understand the Willow Glen business is, in that this is, this is close to a single-family residential neighborhood of relatively small homes, and homes that are on small lots, many single-story homes, and some, some beautiful homes, I have to say, as well. So the character is a bit different. And so my question is, do you have a specific plan to control the noise and the use of alcohol on the, on the patio? Have, you know, do you develop the plan for your waitstaff or others to, to deal with the, the consumption of alcohol on the patio?
Not specifically to the patio, but in general, our staff, like I said, is trained to, to deal with customers and identify those who need to, you know, take a break, and that obviously will continue in our current, in Los Gatos, if we are approved. As it relates to controlling noise, we don't have a specific plan in place, other than to abide by the, at least my understanding of the noise ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions, so, thank you. We will now close the public portion of the public hearing, and invite any comments, questions for staff, or a motion from the commissioners. Commissioner Badami.
I'll just add my comments. When I look at Exhibit Two, and we need to make findings, so when I look at findings for a conditional use permit, based upon what's given us, and there's four items, I can't make the finding to deny the CUP, but what it does say, that we can place conditions that would address any potential impacts, including the proposed hours of operation and delivery times. So as the commission goes forward with its discussion, I would like to hear added conditions in addition to what Commissioner Birch had already come up with, to tighten this up and make it work, not only for the applicant, but for the neighbors as well.
Commissioner Hanson.
I didn't say this earlier, but I, as I was doing research, I, for the benefit of our fellow commissioners, these guys have excellent reviews by all of their customers. I mean, they're five-star reviews from their customers, and, and, and it being a great place to go, being very family-friendly, they allow dogs on their patio, and all that stuff. So I was almost surprised, just because of the scope of it, that it would be that family-oriented, but, but they, they do have five-star reviews, so I, I think this is, and especially given the difficulties of, of leasing this place, as heard by the landlord, you know, I, I think this is something that could be viable, but it would have to have the right terms and conditions. I, before I even came here, did that, that research on the hours of other, like, places, and I had looked at Willow Street for one. Another place that I thought of that I recently went to with my friends was Rootstock, which is a wine bar with limited food service, and they're right up the Santa Cruz, or not in that exact area of Santa Cruz, but, I mean, their hours are more like 3 to 9, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, till 11 on Thursday, till midnight on Friday. But they're, they're not open in the morning, they're open in the afternoon, and it's very limited in the weekdays. And these guys, their, their Willow Glen location is 4 to 9 weekly, and like 12 to 7 on Sunday. So I, I'd feel okay if we could come up with the right conditions. I definitely would think about the hours. They, as far as the noise goes, there is the noise ordinance that we can rely on, and I would be interested in hearing what other, my fellow commissioners think, as far as other conditions.
I may make a comment. I, I think there is a fairly wide gap between what we're looking at in the CUP and what will work for the neighborhood. And the, while I really understand and appreciate the applicants, the way they manage their current business, what we're doing is granting a conditional use permit that runs with the land. So if the applicant were no longer in business, those terms and conditions would be available to someone else who applied, and they may not have that. And the concern is that this is very sensitive to a neighborhood where there has been, and again, I'm a little surprised that there wasn't more neighborhood engagement, because this neighborhood has been very active over issues with several businesses right there, as Ms. Risto pointed out, and others. So I, I would actually think that there's a fair amount of input now, in terms of hours that's been collected, and I would be a little uncomfortable in just trying to do it on the fly. I would be more comfortable with a continuance, perhaps, with providing that data to staff, and have staff work on really trying to find the restrictions that exist already, adjacent to there, and replicate that, rather than this kind of thing, although I do think the input on the numbers of people on the patio is unique, and so I would be more comfortable with us providing that guidance to staff, rather than trying to craft the CUP at this point, just my opinion. Commissioner Janoff.
Would you be amenable in that continuance with requiring the applicant to convene a neighborhood meeting, specifically with, with the Broadway neighbors, not, not the commercial businesses, in order to gain neighbor-specific input as to hours and operation?
Yeah, I think, I, I would, I, I could make a motion at this point, and
Staff, staff has some input before we
Oh, please, yes.
So we do actually have some information on some of the other restaurants in the area. I think the big distinction is, the hours of operations that were listed of when they're actually open versus what their CUP allows are completely different. So all of those CUPs allow later hours. For instance, Willow Street is allowed 11 to 10, Sunday through Thursday, and 11 to 11, Friday and Saturday. Loma is allowed 11:30 to 11, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:30 to 1:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. Rootstock's allowed 10:00 AM to 11:30, Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Friday and Saturday. So their CUP allows them far greater hours than they actually operate. And so ultimately, that's a business decision that the applicants make, and they'll, they'll have that opportunity. I think what you see in not just this application, but a lot of applications, they want to make sure they build in the flexibility, because otherwise, it's another $8,000 to come back and modify if they want to add 30 minutes or an hour. The Planning Commission here is making a recommendation, so I think a continuance, I'm not sure is necessarily in order. We do noticing, within 300 feet of all, all property owners and tenants, we hear the story that we don't, we haven't heard about this till the week before, the day before, for a number of applications, but I think we need to understand that we have an opportunity here, because this has another step. This has to go to the council. So Planning Commission can make recommendations on any conditions they think are appropriate, or offer comments if you don't think it's appropriate, and that, again, direction moves forward to the council, and it will be re-noticing the neighbors. Obviously, the applicants would have an additional opportunity to do additional outreach to the neighbors, to try to get additional input. We did receive input from a number of neighbors who were contacted. Holidays are always tough, we can't always plan the timing, and so that makes it difficult. But I would just offer those comments. Before we get into the minutia, I think a lot of the other comments around Toll House and outdoor entertainment, the Town Council just passed an outdoor entertainment policy that allows by right, outdoor entertainment for anybody in town up until 10:00 PM. So if we start restricting even further, we have a number of businesses that are next to single-family residential neighborhoods. Again, the commission can make that part of a recommendation to the Town Council, and then when it gets to the council, they'll have to decide if this is more unique than other businesses in there. So I just offer that for input before you guys
Sure. Maybe I could follow up on that.
Come to a conclusion.
Yeah. So, and I appreciate that there's a difference between the CUP hours and the business hours, et cetera, but we had a lot of controversy, specifically over Toll House. So where did we end up in, did we control those hours in the CUP? And what, what are the hours that we arrived at?
So Toll House outdoor food is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM in their CUP.
And entertainment, patio?
That I don't have for outdoor entertainment in the patio area.
Okay, and was there a restriction on amplified music there?
I don't have that one in front of me. We'd have to pull that up.
Okay. The reason I raise that is that that, to me, is more analogous than some of the other businesses that you mentioned, that are, first of all, some of those are further away from residential. Secondly, this neighborhood has already interacted on this topic quite a bit, and while the, you know, this stands alone, it also is cumulative. topic quite a bit. And while the, you know, this stands alone, it also is cumulative in some sense as well.
Absolutely. And I think Economic Vitality Manager Ren is here. She may have some additional input on Toll House. Otherwise, we can look up that information as well.
Okay.
The Toll House is allowed to have unamplified entertainment outside or music or whatever they want up until 10:00 p.m., as long as they're following the noise ordinance. The question that was brought to you and to the council regarding the Toll House was actually regarding amplified. So all of the restrictions that were put into place for the Toll House were specifically around amplified sound, and there were restrictions on the days and times.
If I may follow up, is there a definition of amplified? And I think there was a question by the applicant on that.
If it's plugged into an amplification system, so a microphone, a speaker, but acoustic is not considered amplified.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Birch?
I would be willing to make a motion, but before I do, just in case I just get a lot of backlash, my thought is not to continue, that we make a motion and we make recommendations to put into the conditions of approval, and we allow this to move on to the next step. My thoughts being not only some of the things we've already talked about, but including that we would hope they would do some neighborhood residential outreach prior to the meeting. I'm sure many of the neighbors will attend that meeting anyways, so it would behoove you to do that. Do you guys want me to make a motion?
Can I just?
Yeah, there you go.
I do want you to make a motion, but just a point of clarification. When we say residential outreach, what we've seen in the past that has been effective is when there's a physical meeting, not just a postcard that goes out that could get lost, you know, between the pages of your, you know, 100 pages of check mail. So a more, a specifically active notice, we're meeting, we'll be here, we want you to attend. It might even be at one of the residences' homes, you know, but have a physical meeting so you can come to the, you know, to the same page. And then, you know, assuming we move this on, you can, your application in the next step will be more specific, and we'll have the endorsement of your neighbors.
All right, I'll make a motion. I am going to recommend we forward conditional use permit application U-18-020, located at 114 South Santa Cruz Avenue, application, oh, sorry, just did that, to the town council with a recommendation of approval. I can find that the project is categorically exempt, and pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of California, oh, sorry, I already said that too. I'm already getting tired, and we're not even there. And I can refine the requirements by Section 29.20.190 of the town for granting a CUP. I would like to also add in some recommendations for the conditions of approval, please. I'm not going to touch on the hours thing yet, just simply based on what Mr. Paulson said. It was a note that I had made to myself earlier anyways, so I feel that often gets addressed just based on people knowing what they can and can't do. So I'm going to make the note that music is acoustic only, no TVs located on the patio, no speakers located on the patio. And then I believe the recommendation that you please reach out to your residential neighbors before the next meeting. Did I miss anything?
Commissioner Hanson?
You had talked earlier about the possibility of limiting the number of people beyond the fire code. I don't know if you want to put that in there or not, but that was one that you had mentioned earlier.
I don't think I want to make that. I think what I would instead ask is that staff note to council that that was a discussion point because the number of people and the noise created by people on the patio, and see if the council would want to make a recommendation of the number of people on the patio.
Commissioner Badami?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Comments? Commissioner Hanson?
So I just had a question. As far as our comments about the actual hours of operation versus what's in the CUP and the fire code versus the actual number of people in the place. So although they're not part of our recommendation, they'll be, the complete record of this discussion will be forwarded to town council.
So staff sends the verbatim minutes to the town council, so they'll have that opportunity. And many times, they also watch the video as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Janoff?
Just one last comment, is that because of the location of this facility tucked back more into the neighborhood than front-facing on the street, makes this a particularly delicate issue with regards to the neighborhood. We've already talked about that. So in consideration of the next hearing body, I think that's a very unique feature that should be considered at length.
Okay, thank you. And maybe I would add just one more comment. I will be supporting the motion, but I did think it would be helpful to have a little more clarity on the parking issue and whether, in fact, the, this fence would disrupt things. So I would suggest that maybe when you come back to the next body, that you have a little more clarity on whether you're, on how you're going to restrict your folks from parking there. And if there were a restriction such as a fence, would you still be moving forward with this? So I would expect a little more clarity on that subject. So, okay, so I'm going to call the question in favor. All right, okay. Six, none opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We now move on to item five, which is 16791 Frank Avenue, Architecture and Site Application S-17-040, requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence, and construction of a new single-family residence on property-zoned R18, APN 52915100. Property owners Gary Shing and Julie Yang. Applicant Georgie Nowitzki. Project Planner Ryan Safdie. I apologize if I got the applicant's name correct. So I may have a show of hands from the commissioners who visited the property under consideration. Okay. And any disclosures? Okay, Mr. Safdie, I understand you'll be giving the staff report this evening.
Thank you, commissioners. So before you tonight, it's a proposal to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new two-story residence on a 13,465 square-foot parcel, zoned, single-family residential. The proposed new residence would be 3,472 square feet, with 2,111 square-foot first floor, 1,361 square-foot second floor, and an 861 square-foot attached garage. The project is being reviewed by the Planning Commission to consider neighborhood compatibility due to the formal design of the front entry, and because the proposed residence would be the largest in square footage in the immediate neighborhood. Based on the discussion provided in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Okay. We now have time for the applicant to present on the thing. I don't have a card, I don't believe, on this. So if the applicant would like to come forward, you can state your name and address, and then you can provide a card afterward so that we have it for the record. No problem. Go ahead, just go ahead and come up, and you have 10 minutes. Just if you don't mind, start with your name and address, please.
My name is Julie.
Thank you. You can start again.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear? Yes. Dear Planning Commission Chair, Commissioner, and everyone present, we propose to demage an existing two-story old house and replace it with a new two-story home. Currently, this is the only old house in the neighborhood, and I saw. The new house we propose will fit in with the nice neighborhood, will fit in with other nice houses in the neighborhood. This would definitely benefit the entire neighborhood. We love Los Gatos. We love this neighborhood. We want to make this our permanent home. We have tried our best to be a good neighbor and a good citizen. We submitted our application in September of 2017, and since then, we have worked with the planning staff in following consulting architect's suggestion, made significant and sincere efforts trying to move this project forward. Here, I would like to take this opportunity to thank planning staff, especially Mr. Ryan Safdie, for their hard work, guidance, and coordination. The following is a list of major efforts and changes we have made. We have reduced, we have reduced the size of the house to 3,472 square feet, well below the max of 3,801 allowed by the town. Our house, although appears large, but it will have the lowest floor-to-air ratio and the lowest housing density compared to other six neighborhood houses built in, after 1994. All these six houses have FAR larger than 30%, ours FAR is at 25.8%. Here is the table with data supporting the previous statement. There is also a list of table in staff's report with 11 houses. The seven houses here plus four older houses. In there, our FAR is ranked number seven, still well below the average. In addition, we agreed to dedicate a significant portion of our land to town of Los Gatos, reducing our lot size to 1,3465 square feet now. We have also reduced the building size by eliminating one bedroom, reducing the size of the second floor, lowering the ceiling height, and reducing the scale of the front entrance. We have also included road improvement, adding six feet to widen our guns. This certainly will benefit the neighborhood. Now, the remaining issue is a portion, is the portion of the second floor directly above the front entrance. In December, town's consulting architect made additional specific suggestions shown here. This is current house. This is option A and B suggested by town architect. The difference are here, here, and here. In option A or B, the gable element is removed, and this part of the second floor pushed in. And the town's architect believes this will reduce the building mass. While we appreciate the clear direction given to us in December, appreciate Steph Ryan and manager Sally's efforts to move this project forward, we do not agree with town's consulting architect for the following reason. Reason number one, there is a roof separation between first and second floor in the current design, as suggested in many places by the town residential design guideline. For people standing at the street level, looking at the house, actually, you cannot tell there's a difference in building mass between option A and the current design. Reason number two, there are mature trees on the lot that will be kept. And this is a picture of the actual site with orange netting and a story pole. As you can see, you can even see it from this angle, you can even see the front entrance and the second floor. Again, there are more pictures of the site from different angles at Frank F. This is the previous picture. These two are different angles. These are the trees that we're going to keep. This is neighbor's tree. Again, you cannot see the front entrance and the second floor above it. Reason number three, in keeping with the town's residential design guidelines, the current design will bring properly-designed architecture into the neighborhood. Our architect designed this house to follow classical elements of Spanish Mediterranean's architecture, and to fit it into the neighborhood streetscape. If the gable element is removed and the second floor pushed in, the building will lose its vertical splitting as design, will lose balance, and will lose the historical roots of the Spanish Mediterranean architectural style. Per town's residential design guidelines, design features, proportions, and the details shall be consistent with the architectural style selected. Reason number four, talking about fitting into the neighborhood, there is an existing example. This is the house at 16800 Frank F., right across street from the project site. And you can see this gable design elements and the pop-out of the second floor portion, similar to our design. Actually, this house is taller than ours. In addition to all the reasons stated above, I would like to bring you attention to a very important fact of this project. We have our neighbors support our project. This is the project site, and these are the neighbors surrounding it. The house shaded green are the neighbors we spoke to, and showed them the plan. And they're happy to see this really old house to be placed by the new, by a new one that we propose. The green with stars are the neighbors who also sent us support letters, which is in your package. The house shaded light green are the neighbors we have visited a few, several times, and they were not home. We did leave them a letter informing them about the project. So far, we have not heard objections or negative feedbacks from them. Another issue, another issue is the item 53 of the conditional approval about curb and sidewalk in Loufi. We ask not to pay the fee because our neighbors, on this side, they don't have a sidewalk. On the other side street, there were sidewalks, but on this street, there is no sidewalk. But if we have to pay, we will propose to build the sidewalk rather than pay the fee now. If we can make it, you know, if we can make it happen, now why wait? Finally, a very personal note. Sadly, I lost my husband to cancer. And the cancer, cancer also took Gary's wife away from him. After many years being alone and recouping, we are so glad and fortunate that we found each other. We live in separate households now, and plan to move in together after this new house is built. We want to make sure we have enough room for our combined family of four daughters. We are not just building a new house. We are building a new life together. And we sincerely hope you can support us, approve the current design, and help us to start this new chapter of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your compelling presentation. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for your presentation and for, you know, going through all the whys and why nots on what you're going forward with. As you know, the town architect did recommend a different front facade, the option A or B. And it currently says in the terms and conditions that you would implement option A. And his rationale for it, as you know, was to reduce the view of the massing, and your house is close to the street. So my question to you is, are you willing to accept if that's the way to go forward to do design option A?
In my closing argument, I would say yes. I already prepared to say yes. But we hope, since all the reasons I presented, I hope we can keep the current design, especially since we, our neighbor across street already has that gable element.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Badami?
The town architect expressed concern with the scale, the bulk and the mass, the size, and neighborhood compatibility. So at any point in time, did you consider below-grade square footage?
Below?
It, otherwise known as like a cellar or basement, we call it below grade square footage. It kind of reduce, you get the living area that you want for the four daughters, but it reduces the bulk and mass that's visible to the rest of the neighborhood, so it's hiding it. You get the square footage in lieu of.
Oh, I never, I never thought about that, I have to just frankly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? I had a question about the current design versus A and B. And I actually wanted to understand, on the current design, the bottom floor over the entrance, is that a shed roof? I had a hard time from the plan to figure that out. Yeah, go back to the current, yeah, the current elevation, the first floor over the front door. Is that a, is that a straight shed roof?
Yeah, it was originally similar to this, and, and because the, at Consulting Architect's suggestion was too tall, lowered it, and we thought by changing from this to this will be low, you know, will be lower, but we could change it back.
Right. Okay, so it's a small roof that protrudes. I'm trying to find that on the plan. Maybe I should just look that up while you're going ahead and answering any other questions. So, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Tavana.
Yeah, I noticed you met with a lot of your neighbors, and they expressed, at least some of them signed letters of support, and others you met and showed them the plans. Were there any, were there any objections to those plans noted?
Um, I haven't, I haven't heard that. Actually, I forgot to mention our neighbor, Ms. Stenman is here, you know, they're, they're very eager to see this project to start. If they have, they, I haven't heard, they haven't told me.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Janoff.
One other question. The Consulting Architect in his report also indicated there was some desire to see the front walkway that leads to the entry door made a little bit more narrow, but he, he indicated there was, he had some confusion about exactly how wide that walkway is. Did you have any conversation with the architect to discuss the entry walkway and its width?
I believe our architect already responded and made the, made the adjustment, may not be showing in these two D design.
Yeah, because the walkway doesn't, doesn't appear there.
Yeah, it does not show there.
Okay, thank you.
And also, they also mentioned the material. I think they are agreed with that as well.
Okay, so, thank you. You'll get another chance with five minutes, but I have a card here, so we will ask Susan Stenman, I don't know if that's correct, to, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Susan Stenman. I live at 16777 Frank Avenue, so we are directly, we, we are in the, house next to the Augustine Street. That is no longer actually a street, it's the easement. So I would start by just saying, we are actually very eager to have the project move forward. We bought that home from the builder in 2010, and we have three children. We're very close with the neighbor who owns the house on Augustine. He is currently renting the house to a family who also has two small children. And it's a kind of a close-knit neighborhood. We've been pleased with the communication that we have received from, from the applicants. They've been very accommodating with our concerns. Some of my neighbors have sent me notes like, hey, can you bring this up? Who weren't able to be here tonight. I'd say by and large, everybody is in support of having something done. It is definitely an eyesore for us immediately around. We're always wondering when it's going to catch on fire. It just doesn't seem very safe. The house has never really seemed very safe. Our concerns that we brought up with them, our, one concern that they addressed was adding the six-foot easement, per the easement approval, which they have added, because there are, there would be three families moving in and out of that area, because the driveway for the Augustine behind the house and for ours, all of our, the garages are all adjacent to one another, so those cars would all have to take that path. So that was important to us, to make sure that that was paved out and that we had it, and the house was set back for that. So I know it delayed them a bit, but we appreciate the fact that they took it into account. We were also concerned about the drainage that has been a problem on the street. The city, a few years ago, finally addressed some of that and put added sewer drainage in the center of the street. Typically, water would run down that Augustine area and flood, sometimes flood the drain that was back there and flood back into Augustine House. That has been limited, but one issue is that the current location has dirt, so it absorbs any extra rainwater, so we just want to make sure that drainage is proper. She just wasn't sure exactly, she knows that they've got, her architect and the civil engineer has gone back and forth about that of providing appropriate drainage there. And then our only other concern is the issue of the sidewalk, which we didn't understand, because even though there's sidewalks in the whole neighborhood, that particular section, none of us have sidewalks except for the house that's right next to the dentist's office.
Thank you. Are there questions? So just to clarify on the sidewalk issue, on that side of the street, are there sidewalks?
No.
So if they were to build a sidewalk only on their street, would that be normal?
No, I, what we have is everybody seems, everybody has, there's a, a set aside space, so people park there. It's cement or gravelled, but there's no actual official sidewalk there. So that would, it would, if they added it, like I said, it's the first house that's closest to Los Gatos Boulevard, right next to the dentist's office, and then the last house at the corner of Frank and Azora, those are the two houses that have sidewalks, and all the houses in between just have kind of an extended pavement area slash gravel area in front of the house, but no actual sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any other cards, so the applicant is invited back. You have another five minutes, if you'd like, on any topic.
And yes, I just want to clarify, we, about the sidewalk, prefer not to build, I would prefer not to pay for it as well. It's, we're not voluntarily offering to build it.
I see.
Yeah, but if we have to pay and, you know, not knowing the paying, after paying, not knowing when it, it would be built, and we may have, you know, we were asking maybe given the option. Yeah. I hope my presentation convinced you that changing from the current design to option A would not reduce the appearance of the building mass, since there is no difference in building mass, since there are mature trees on the lot in front of the building to block the view, since the current design has its architectural advantages, since there's already a precedent in the neighborhood. Why not keep the current design? Why not build a house which already fits into the neighborhood in its current design? Let's build a beautiful Las Gatos together. I respectfully ask you to consider approving this project without condition number five and allow us to keep the current design. I also ask your consideration to approve it without condition number 53, to give us the option, and if not, you know, to give us option instead of paying the fee now. If for some reason, you still will vote no on the current design, I would like to let you know that we are open to option A. Although less ideal. Yeah, although less ideal, we would like to move this project forward without further delay. As I mentioned earlier, we're not just building a house, we're building our new life together, and we sincerely hope you can support us. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now close the public portion of the public hearing, and so we now have, ask if any commissioners have questions of staff, wish to comment on the application, or introduce a motion. Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question for staff. So it, it was clear that the driving behind the, the portion of land coming back came from the town, and, and so is, is that the case that there, there must be a sidewalk there, and, and how would, how would that relate to the rest of the street, or like, or, or, or is, is, would you rather have the fee? Could you just explain kind of like where that came from?
We have Mike Weiss from Parks and Public Works here who can answer that, and if you have any additional questions following that, then we'll do our best to answer them.
Good evening. Mike Weiss, Associate Engineer. Yep, so when we're evaluating an application, we kind of take into account the existing conditions. This particular street and this particular property, the north side of the street has seven contiguous properties that have no curb, gutter, sidewalk, as Ms. Stenman mentioned. Frank and Azora, that property has curb and gutter, and then the two properties on the east end of the block have curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So, given all that, we would, we included the condition of approval reference number 53 for the in-lug fee, because if the improvements were to be installed, you would have three properties in a row without any kind of concrete improvements, then you'd have curb, gutter, sidewalk for one property for a stretch of 140 feet or so, and then you have three additional properties beyond that without, with that same gap. So as a result of all of that, we require the condition approval for the in-lug fee for future implementation of that construction. If this was on the other side of the street where there's far more recent development and curb, gutter, and sidewalk, it would most likely be required to be constructed if it was going to continue those improvements. So it's, it's a multifaceted kind of evaluation. So if you have any further questions, I'm hopeful.
Okay, just, I just had one more. So maybe, I, I think that was pretty clear. So the reason for giving back the land was to make it even, or like?
So the, where you're referencing the right-of-way dedication.
Yes.
Yep, so this particular neighborhood, when it was originally subdivided, had a 40-foot right-of-way for Frank Avenue, and so as the properties have been redeveloped, each additional property has subsequently dedicated 10 additional feet to widen it to 60 feet. So that's the additional 10 feet that they're referencing, that they're dedicating to be consistent with the neighbors that have redeveloped recently.
So it'll make it consistent with the rest of the neighborhood?
Exactly.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Janoff.
Just to follow up on the sidewalk question, would it be, allow for them to build their own sidewalk for just that one strip, or would that be considered something of a hazard because it's, you're, you're changing your, your walking surface, property to property? I mean, would, would it be acceptable to even permit that?
I, I don't believe if they would classify it as a hazard, it would be unique, kind of a different situation where you, you literally have, you know, where, in the same line as where that sidewalk would be, on the other properties adjacent, you'd have, I believe it's pavement, or, you know, asphalt pavement, gravel, dirt, landscape area. So if you're trying to promote people utilizing a sidewalk for 140 feet, you'd have to trudge through other surfaces, possibly not even paved. So it, it seems, it would be a little odd. I wouldn't necessarily say it'd be hazardous, but it would be more so hazardous potentially if you have curb and gutter that extends six inches above the grade without any kind of transition whatsoever towards the neighboring properties. So it would be out there on its own island, literally. I don't know if it'd be classified as hazardous, but it would be an odd situation.
I had a question on architecture and the, the current proposed versus option A and B. And, you know, while I greatly respect Mr. Cannon's opinion, I, I actually think that the gable end with the shed roof of the current may actually contribute less to the bulk appearance than what's been suggested with the hip roof. And I also am looking at the picture on page five, which is his example of the approach for the architectural style, and that in fact does have a gable end over the entrance, not, not a more elaborate hip roof. So do you have, does staff have an opinion, a strong opinion on current versus option A and option B?
I don't know that staff has a strong opinion. We generally tend to go with Larry's recommendations, but if the planning commission determined that the applicant's justification seemed appropriate, then, then staff would not have a problem with you moving in that direction.
Okay, and I would certainly defer to other commissioners, Commissioner Janoff, who may be much more expert than I am, but I was, I was swayed by the applicant on that.
I think for me, the primary difference between the example on page five of Mr. Cannon's report is that the entrance is set back, and so there's a certain, where, where the, the current design of the applicant, the, the entry is actually forward, and so it's the most prominent feature, and the residential design guideline does say that in a neighborhood such as this, you know, the, the massive front entrance is not, not likely to be appropriate, and I think that's, that's the situation. The style of architecture, you know, given that there's a house across the street, well, they're completely different styles of architecture. You've got the Mediterranean, then, not, not entirely sure what the house across the street is. So I'm not sure that it's fair to say, since that, since that architecture includes that prominent facade, and that, that yours, yours should also, the, the house across the street, it's a, it's a fairly flat front where yours, your entrance protrudes, and so I think, for me, that, that creates a, a certain mass that is, is very strong, and adding the, the hipped roof just sort of softens that front a little bit. I think it's still consistent with the Mediterranean architecture, perhaps more so, I'm not sure the shed roof works as, as well as, as the hips, given that the rest of the house is designed that way.
Yes, Commissioner Hanson.
I don't have near as much expertise on the architecture as, as both Commissioner Huedis and Commissioner Janoff, however, the other thing that I noted that, that swayed me in favor of option A was, in going to visit the site, the, the house is actually fairly close to the street, and, and so anything that can be done to make it look more set back, in my mind, was, was a good thing, and, and that seemed like it would be more in your face, that you're going to be, seeing it from the street, and it's so close. And I, with all due respect, with the trees being there, I mean, you know, we have to think of it as, if the trees weren't there as well, I, I think that, that option A looks probably gets more set back a bit, especially given how close it is to the street.
Okay, at this point, do we have a motion, or maybe start with one and see where we go with it? Mr. Janoff.
I'll, I'll, I'll try a motion. But what I would like to approve in the motion is the option A house. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Architecture and Site Application S-17-040, approving demolition of an existing single-family residence and constructing a new single-family residence on property zone R-18APN52915100. I can make the required findings for SEQA, and I can make the required findings for the demolition of a single-family residence as required by Section 29.10.09030, Section E of the Town Code. The project is in compliance with the residential design guidelines for single-family homes, not in the, not in the hillside residential area with option A. And I can make the required considerations in review of the Architecture and Site Application as required by 29.20.150 of the Town Code.
A question for the maker of the motion. Did you have any intent on item 53 of the conditions which related to the curb, building the curb?
I do not.
Okay, so it would stand, okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Hanson.
I would second, I, I would like to ask the maker of the motion, did she intend to include the conditions in Exhibit Three? include the conditions in Exhibit Three?
Refresh me.
All of the conditions in Exhibit Three as part of the motion, that we're approving it based on the conditions in Exhibit Three?
Conditions of approval, yes.
Which do include option A?
Yes.
Then I will second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, see none, I'll call the question in favor. Aye, okay, approved unanimously, six zero. Thank you for submitting, and are there appeal rights?
There are, thank you. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. There are forms available in the clerk's office, there's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. We now move on to other business, and we have a few items here. Item six is election of chair and vice chair, which is an administrative item for our 2019 meetings. Do we have a motion on chair of the planning commission? Commissioner Hanson.
I'd like to nominate our vice chair, Commissioner Hudes.
Commissioner Badami.
I'd like to second that, but I would like to add the comment that Vice Chair Hudes has demonstrated exceptional skill as acting chair, and I must say, you always come to the meetings extremely prepared and thorough, and you set a very high bar for professional integrity.
Well, thank, thank you for the comment. I guess we can call the question. In favor? Aye, okay, passes six zero. And so I want to thank you for your continued support and your, your indulgence with my stumbling through some of this, and I hope not to mess up too badly in 2019. The next thing is a motion for the chair, the vice chair, and I'd like to make that motion to nominate Melanie Hanson for vice chair of the planning commission for 2019. Commissioner Birch.
And I enthusiastically second that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Badami.
And I would just like to add the comment that she's demonstrated keen intelligence, and it's, it's long overdue, so we are happy to have both of your leadership.
Okay, thank you. So we'll call that question in favor. Aye, six zero, passes. Okay, item seven, a report from the Director of Community Development. Mr. Paulson, do you have a report?
I do. First, congratulations to the new chair and vice chair. Look forward to the upcoming year, and hopefully the new commissioner, Commissioner Tavana, didn't get too scared after this evening's meeting. Was a doozy of a first one for the, for the first meeting of the year. Since the planning commission last met, the council met, they did the second reading for a number of fence ordinance amendments, not including specific hillside amendments, which are still going through the process. And they also ended up hearing and approving the conditional use permit for wine tasting for Lenardi's that the planning commission heard later in the year last year. With that, that concludes staff's report.
So we've changed the agenda order, so we now have the long-awaited subcommittee reports. So Commissioner Badami.
I have one. So the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee met earlier this afternoon, and we considered one item, which was 400 Sermont Drive, and they were requesting review of a proposal for a subdivision of one lot into three lots with one remainder parcel on property zoned HR 2 and 1/2. So the committee gave our input, there's a lot of steep slopes, we had concerns with the LRDA, and also we had some concerns with the legality of the subdivision pertaining to the Subdivision Map Act, whether we could approve or deny based upon those findings. We had cut and fill concerns and concerns, as we always do with the hillside design standards and guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Other reports? With Commissioner O'Donnell out, I'll have to give the report on the Historic Preservation Committee. We held a special meeting on December 13th, which was after our last meeting. We considered 47 Alpine Avenue, which was modifications for the stone walls in a landmark site, and I believe we approved that. And then we had a number of other items requesting preliminary review, and those have all been given feedback. Those were not actual approvals or action at this point. 221 Almendra, 269 Los Gatos Boulevard, 35 Palm Avenue, 50 Whitney, and 445 Los Gatos Boulevard. So we had a very busy agenda on historic preservation, many of which we will be considering here in the future. So I think that brings us to a close, and I want to thank you, oh, actually, commission matters, if there's anything else that commissioners would like to bring up, this is the time in our new agenda order. Okay? So thank you all for participating in this meeting, and I look forward to a very productive 2019.